Great. Welcome to the November 15th, 2023, Meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call. Commissioner Van Nyman.
Present.
Commissioner Parna.
Present.
Commissioner Nueva Camina.
Present.
Commissioner Sheffrin.
Present.
Commissioner Woodier.
Present.
And I'm Vice Chair Weston. Tonight Chair Nichols is excused. I'd like to thank the following staff for being present tonight. Glenn Coyle, Ian Lefcourt, Jeff Churchill, Odra Kardinas, Becky Frye, Jenny Lieback, and Chris Wyatt. To start, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And next, a motion to approve the November 1st, 2023 Meeting Summary.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. Next, we'd like to do public comment and items for the audience. This is not the public hearing. So if there is anyone who would like to comment on a topic that is not related to the public hearing, this would be the time. All right. Looks like everyone is here for the main event. All right. So we are going to move to the public hearing for the housing regulations for Redmond 2050. I'd like to open the hearing and introduce Ian Lefcourt.
Hello. Thank you, Co-Chair. My name is Ian Lefcourt. I use he/him pronouns. I'm a senior planner with Long Range Planning, and we are here to talk about regulations associated with the housing element. We'll do a quick little summary PowerPoint of what we're here to talk about, what's under review, and of course, the schedule. And then I'll turn it back so we can start hearing from our community members. Perfect. So yes, and as a reminder, we have our public hearing tonight, but we will also have a second public hearing on December 6, and that will actually be for a different set of proposed amendments. The high-level summary here, 2108-170 and at the bottom, 2174, are related to small lot short plats and also some kind of streamlining of processes related to language updates and calculations. We might have a, staff might have a recommendation about what to do with small lot short plats, but we may be in a position where we don't actually have to amend this now because our neighborhood residential zoning updates would probably take care of this anyway. So stay tuned there. 2108-260 is about removing barriers to attached dwelling units. 2120 Affordable Housing. This has a new density bonus for affordable housing on religious lands. Specific protocol for allocation of parking stalls to affordable housing. And of course, two different proposals for changes to mandatory inclusionary zoning provisions. 2135, a brand-new component, laying out all the provisions for live-work units. And 2157 is, in order to implement the comprehensive plan, removes some limitations on emergency housing and emergency shelters. The proposals that were part of the notified amendment package, A and B, the main focus here is that the lever staff is recommending Commission look at is the set-aside percent because we do, as we've discussed, really need to focus on that 50% AMI affordability level. The separate amendments, these are not the ones being discussed tonight but are coming at the next public hearing on December 6, are both components related to that kind of activating of the affordable housing on lands owned or controlled by religious institutions. One is adding the uses to the use table, and the second is updating a definition to include affordable housing as an accessory use. And there is our timeline. I will emphasize that this is a tentative timeline, and because this is such a topic of interest to our community, we may need to revise this as needed. But that's the short little PowerPoint, and I pass it back to Commissioner Weston.
Great. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions before we start with comments? Okay, great. We will start with Viva Dubey. So you can come up to the microphone right here. And if you can start with your name and address.
Do you want the complete address?
With your name and address to introduce yourself.
You want the complete address?
No, just like the street and...
Oh, right. Okay, okay. Yeah. Right. Hello, everybody. Good evening. My name is Viva Dubey, and I'm a resident of the Redmond City. And I live in 139th Avenue Northeast. And I came on a fiance visa and got married here. And I have been through difficult abusive marriage and had no choice but to, you know, take a step and come out on my own and start my life. See what can happen. However, I earn barely about $20 per hour for about two to three hours a day, and I'm unable to afford the rent in the Redmond despite me sharing a small apartment with another person. I live in the Redmond so that I can walk to the work as I don't have a transportation of my own. And also, I don't have anybody else in the country from my family. And I continue to look for rental assistance as I have large amount of money to be paid for legal assistance and for my day-to-day basic needs, like food and medicines. And it's a little bit not possible to carry on with the type of income that I have. And I hope to build my life again, my career, and live in the city as I have the community support of the city. And I request you to make it affordable for people like me who go through something what I'm going through, all of a sudden change in their life, and start everything all over again. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Steve Orser. And again, if you could introduce with your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Steve Orser. I'm with Key GIP. I am at Southeast 6th Street in Bellevue, Washington. I wanted to come before you to talk to you about the inclusionary zoning proposals that have been talked about. And these requirements create situations where the projects by private developers to provide affordable housing are no longer feasible. We are incumbent upon and with our capital partners and commercial banks in order to build the projects. And when you put on this new layer, the much lower layer of inclusionary zoning, then the projects do not pencil. As a result, developers and capital partners will look at other locations on the East Side or Seattle to build the housing. So instead of getting housing at all, and certainly not affordable housing, you don't get that. As a result, even the supply of market housing is not here for all of those who need it, making it even worse as a housing crisis in Redmond. This proposal cuts off AMI at 50%. So nurses, teachers, firefighters, employees in the city of Redmond who make 51% or greater cannot live in these units. We want you to consider the entire population of Redmond and what the housing stock needs to provide. The city's own financial feasibility has demonstrated that these numbers do not work at this low rate. We suggest a pilot project like Estera Park, where you continue on with inclusionary zoning as has been done. And then, as market conditions improve, people expect that 2025, 2026, things will be better, the capital markets will be stronger. And that might then be a time to reconsider and take a look. This would allow you to move forward with inclusionary zoning like you've been doing and then provide the housing so the developers can then provide that housing for folks and continue with the rezone process itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Tim Jackson.
Good evening, everyone. Tim Jackson, PMF Capital Management. We're located up at the Kelsey Creek Shopping Center. That was renovated with a lot of help from Claudia Balducci. She was great. Been in the community for a really long time. Me personally, I was one of the very first people that was a part of the Lake Washington School Board Foundation when we did that with Chuck Kimball Way, way back in the day. It's hard to imagine it's been that long. The company's been involved in East King County for a long time. Nat and Brian Franklin are the principals. We've been in Redmond on a couple different deals. We helped to do the Volkswagen deal at the Redmond Town Center, worked with Gary Lee. He was amazing. So we love the city of Redmond. We're the new owners of the family Pancake House in Redmond Insight, next to Marymore. So just wanted to, A, come here and introduce ourselves, but also to kind of reiterate the comments. You know, we've been through a lot of different zonings, how the multifamily conversations went in Seattle, Bellevue, Bothell. We've done some kind of pioneering work on development down in Puyallup on some retail stuff that they were working on down there. It's very, very difficult to do multifamily housing if you're trying to target 50 and you don't kind of like incentivize that. And when you want to peel off MFT really early, eight years, that's a lot faster than like Seattle and some other cities have done who I think have been successful at this. It's just very, very difficult. The other thing I'd say is, you know, we're obviously new to the conversation. And it's, you know, so I'll let some of the others who've been involved a little bit longer kind of get more in-depth on it. But, you know, to say like, well, two or three years. But to me, if you want a long-lasting program that's going to deliver a lot of units between now and 2050, then you're going to want whatever you initiate to be successful for the long haul. And that's going to be something that you're going to want to incentivize. The only other thing I would say is on the parking, very difficult to do MFT with parking because parking stalls just are subject to steel and concrete, and inflation is just super expensive. That being said, read through all the planning and all that kind of stuff. I just want to congratulate you all, like the impact statements and all that stuff. You guys have a lot of very forward-thinking things. It's really exciting. We're very excited to be a part of it, and I want to thank you all for all of the time that you've spent working on this. And again, mainly also to just introduce ourselves and say how excited we are to be in Redmond and to have a chance to hopefully contribute to your vision towards 2050. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tom Markle.
I'm Tom Markle. I'm with Nelson Legacy Group. We're at 16508 Northeast 79th Street here in Redmond. I listened to the recording of your last meeting, which I was unable to attend, and there seemed to be a consistent question, which was, if there's an increase in cost because of inclusionary zoning, who pays? Now, we're doing our first multifamily project. I've learned a little something about the economics of them in the process, and I'll sort of share my perspective. You know, the first thing to consider is cost shifting. You know, for our project, the market rate one-bedroom apartment will be about $2,800. And currently, with the rule of, you know, 10% at 80%, a one-bedroom would be at $2,198. As has been previously discussed, when planning a project, there are a whole bunch of criteria that have to be met. And to some extent, it's sort of a zero-sum game where you're pushing on a balloon. You push the numbers until they work in total, but they all have to be in line with the market. You know, I calculated that the rent of a one-bedroom market apartment is, per unit, $60 a month higher than it might otherwise be in order to offset the subsidy for the one-bedroom apartment for 80% of AMI. I've, I looked at the impact of going to 10% of the units at 50% of AMI, and the subsidy jumps up to $151 a unit on every market rate apartment. So, you know, there's definitely going to be an impact on affordability of housing in Redmond. Second, there was some discussion last week of, well, will the landowner absorb the cost of this? And I think you got to step back and look at the big picture. Redmond wants to add 24,000 housing units, grow its population by about 50,000 people in the next 25 years. And most of this growth is going to occur within some reasonable distance of the transit stations. Most of that property is already developed. It's got businesses or uses that are already generating rent or income for the owners. And so, you know, the owners are going to take that opportunity cost into account when they think about what they're willing to sell their property for. So you're in an environment, for land at least, where there's going to be a really strong demand and a limited supply. And it puts the seller in a really strong negotiating position. So you're really in a situation where there's a scarcity of land. So I don't think land cost is going to do it. If you really just cut to the quick and think about, an apartment building is a business. Its customers are tenants. The business generates income through rent. If you give one set of customers a break on rent, someone else has to pay for it, and that's the market rate customers. At a minimum, the kind of changes you're thinking about in looking at inclusionary zoning is going to certainly reduce affordability of market rate housing in Redmond. And as a developer looks at a project, if that offset causes the required prices of market rate rent to be too high, the project's not going to be built. And so there goes your supply, which also has an impact on affordability. And I think what you've heard from those who've spoken so far tonight is what you're really proposing would shut off supply in Redmond. So I would really strongly encourage you to give some more thought to the proposals before you and recognize, you know, what the impact of that is. At a minimum, you're going to make market rate housing more expensive and less affordable for even more people. I know you're trying to help people and do a good thing, but ultimately, I think what you're considering or what's been placed in front of you as options is going to have exactly the opposite effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bhavna Madhapa. And again, if you can introduce yourself, name and address.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I'm Bhavna Madhapa. I live in Seattle, 2900 First Ave. I am the Housing Policy Coordinator with the Indian American Community Services. Redmond's housing needs are the greatest at 73% for households with income at 50% area median income and below. Redmond Census data shows 37% of the population is Asian and 7% is Hispanic. 41% of the city of Redmond is foreign-born, with the South Asians being the majority immigrant community. We advocate for prioritizing the housing needs for this population for the mandatory inclusionary zoning policies. We need such policies that specifically target this segment of the population because the private market does not and will not meet these housing needs. So the mandatory inclusionary zoning eases the housing cost burden of this low and moderate-income housing households residing in communities with high housing costs and create more affordable housing options throughout the city. 89% of the Redmond's workforce lives outside of the city, and housing costs are the main reason. Our daily wage workers, educators, retailers, and bank workers are unable to afford the current rents at Redmond. And our single-income tech workers often come in as subcontractors in a low-moderate-income category as they are not paid honorable wages and cannot think of living in Redmond. The mandatory inclusionary zoning reduces this economic and racial segregation by creating mixed-income opportunities and gives low- and moderate-income households more housing options near these opportunity-rich zones, and thus creates that sense of community. I would like to also add that we at the Indian American Community Services also support the increasing density of faith-owned land for purposes of affordable housing production. This is a good step in bringing more capacity for affordable housing in the city of Redmond. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is John Frekku. Sorry, I can't read your writing.
Hi. Good evening. I'm John Franka. 16191 Northeast 83rd Street, Redmond, Washington. I live right here in downtown Redmond, and I work at Tremel Crow Residential, Pacific Northwest Division, which is based here in Redmond. Tremel Crow is a leading multifamily real estate development company with a local presence in 16 metros across the US. Over 45 years, TCR has built more than 288,000 multifamily residences delivering amenity-rich communities nationwide. Locally, TCR has built over 3,000 apartments, and we're currently building Charles, a 246-unit apartment building on the corner of Redmond Way and 161st. We closed a construction loan with CIBC in June of 2022 for the Charles. The loan was difficult to obtain, but in the end, we did have one bank offer to provide a construction loan. The loan was possible because the metrics of the deal met the bank's financial requirements, which have become more stringent since 2022 with the Fed's rate hikes. Typically, a bank looks at a metric called the yield on debt, which is the apartment's projected income divided by the debt amount. In 2022, sorry, if in 2022 we had been required to set aside 10% of the apartments for people making 50% of the area median income instead of 80%, we would not have met the bank's yield on debt requirement to obtain the construction loan. Since the requirement is 80%, we are able to provide 25 units for people making 80% of AMI and 221 units at market rate. All cities in the US are competing for investors and lenders to finance building in their communities. And when their returns are better in other areas, like Florida or Texas, it's harder for us to bring them here. Without the money, we cannot build homes. And if we can't build homes fast enough to meet the growth that we are seeing in our community, then we will see apartment rents continue to rise, traffic worsen, people struggling to pay rents, and businesses looking elsewhere for a better community for their employees. I want to close by saying Redmond has been a wonderful community to live and to work. And we need to provide more housing for the people at around 50% AMI. I would like to provide my support for finding attainable solutions to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is David Morton.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm David Morton, 19934 Northeast Union Hill Road, Redmond 98053. The Redmond 2050 housing regulations represent a crucial step towards addressing the evolving needs of Redmond and fostering sustainable growth. These regulations aim to shape the city's housing landscape for the next three decades. By planning for housing needs through 2050, Redmond demonstrates a commitment to responsible urban development. This forward-thinking approach acknowledges the challenges posed by a growing population and seeks to balance the demand for housing with environmental, social, and economic considerations. Striking this balance is essential for ensuring that Redmond remains a vibrant, inclusive, and sustainable community in the long run. This hearing underscores a commitment to the transparency and inclusivity in the decision-making process. It's essential that the community's diverse voices are heard, allowing for a well-rounded understanding of the potential impacts of the regulations. Affordable housing is a critical concern, and Redmond's approach to ensuring inclusivity and affordability in its housing element regulations is important. Balancing growth and sustainability is also vital, and the regulations should minimize the environmental footprint of new developments. Pervious pavements, such as permeable concrete or asphalt, offer benefits in low-impact development, or LID, by allowing water infiltration, reducing stormwater runoff, and recharging groundwater. They mitigate flooding risks, contribute to sustainable urban drainage, and enhance water quality outside the caras by filtering pollutants. And please correct your copy to read, however, the drawbacks of pervious pavement include potential clogging, reduced load-bearing capacity, and higher maintenance costs. On the other hand, impervious pavements, like traditional concrete, hinder natural water absorption, causing increased runoff and water pollution. While durable and low-maintenance, they exacerbate urban heat islands and disrupt natural hydrological cycles. To optimize LID, a balanced approach involves integrating pervious surfaces strategically in urban landscapes, maximizing their advantages while addressing challenges like durability and maintenance to achieve sustainable and resilient water management solutions. The proposed housing element amendments will hopefully encourage the development of diverse housing options to accommodate the needs of a varied population. This includes single-family, multifamily, and affordable housing units and spaces for mixed-use development. A well-rounded housing strategy is essential for fostering a dynamic and resilient community that can adapt to changing demographic and economic trends. Redmond's initiative to formulate housing regulations through 2050 is laudable and signals a commitment to responsible and forward-looking urban planning. Thank you for this opportunity to contribute my perspective.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jesse Simpson.
Hey, Jesse Simpson here, Government Relations Policy Manager for the Housing Development Consortium. Live at 605 East Denny. The Housing Development Consortium is a group of nonprofit affordable housing developers and associated people working across the affordable housing sector to bring on the housing that is so needed throughout our society in King County and beyond. We appreciate the Planning Commission and city's staff for your diligent work to address our housing crisis and to bring more market rate and affordable housing to Redmond. We appreciate the opportunity to contribute our insights to the Redmond 2050 housing element. In general, we're strongly supportive of the focus on 50% AMI housing. As you heard earlier, over 70% of the housing needs for Redmond over the next 20 years are at this level. When it comes to this specific set-aside percentage, recognize that careful calibration of affordable housing requirements is essential to balance affordability and ensure that there's an overall development environment that encourages more homes of all types to be built. Considering the available information, we think that's 10% set aside at 50% AMI alongside the development capacity increases that are proposed as part of the whole comprehensive plan update are reasonable. But ask that you move this alongside changes to parking requirements and development standard flexibility to ensure that Redmond's still building housing of all types. I also want to emphasize that the only time to impose increased inclusionary zoning requirements to capture the value of increased density from a public perspective for affordable housing is at the time of that upzone. Think that the consultant's analysis shows that there's a negative 0.12% change in yield on cost for mid-rise typologies by moving from a 10% at 80% AMI to 10% at 50. Think that this relatively modest negative impact on development feasibility can and should be offset through simultaneous changes to parking requirements and development standard flexibility. We're strongly supportive of the simultaneous effort here in Redmond to reduce parking minimums generally and eliminate them near transit. It lowers development costs and takes a step to meet our climate It lowers development costs and takes a step to meet our climate and sustainable transportation goals. We also believe this created value should be considered in context of calibrating an affordable housing requirement. Incorporating the city's citywide reduction in parking requirements to 0.5 spaces per unit into the city's consultant, city consultant's model improves the yield on cost by 0.3%, offsetting the impact of deeper affordability requirements. We encourage the city to also consider introducing other flexibility and development standards to enhance feasibility and promote more housing coming online faster, specifically waiving or reducing setbacks, modulation, and floor plate maximums. Beyond mandatory inclusionary zoning, would like to comment on a few other elements of this housing element. Strongly supportive of the density bonus for faith-owned land. See, this is a critical step for providing more housing options that are directly affordable. To maximize the potential value for this, we suggest going beyond just doing a density bonus on the existing zoning to look at site-level specifics on project feasibility and consider some adjustments to underlying density in the zoning if needed to make new affordable housing developments on these lands feasible. We also encourage you to explore expanding this bonus beyond the faith-owned land to land owned by public entities and nonprofits. Finally, support the proposed regulations to eliminate density and spacing limitations for emergency housing and shelters. King County Affordable Housing Need Allocation shows Redmond needs over 3,800 new emergency housing units in the next 20 years, and eliminating these barriers is a great way to start moving us in that direction. Thanks for the opportunity to testify. Appreciate your dedication towards making Redmond a more inclusive, resilient, and affordable place.
Thank you. Next is Steve Yun.
Steve Yun, Simiamas, Washington. I represent Mill Creek Residential Trust. We're a multifamily developer with several projects in Redmond, and I've spoken here a few times on this subject, and so I apologize for restating some of this, but it is very, very important. I heard the comments today. I want to just emphasize that development wants to do our part with affordability and providing solutions. You know, the most important thing that I want the commission to understand is that we need help now. We need help. We don't need obstacles. And right now, as it's proposed, the, you know, the cost or the burden of providing this is 100% on the private development community, and there is more that the Planning Commission and the city can do to help us be part of this solution. I do want everybody to understand sort of, you know, this potential legislation obviously is for the long term, but the current economic conditions are really significant. You know, values have fallen, you know, 25% give or take. So, you know, a project that might have cost 90 million with a little bit of profit to 100 million now is worth 75 million. So what's happening, and I think some of my colleagues have spoken about this, is, you know, development has stopped. People want to buy buildings in other markets. They don't want to develop, and so, you know, the cost of housing is going up, and so it makes that, you know, spread between the costs and value really, really difficult. And, you know, just to give you an example on the inclusionary requirements, you know, to go from the current scenario, the option A, the 5% at 50, to the 7% at 50% on a 100-unit project, that's 500,000. And so what that means is you have to get it from somewhere, and so it means that, you know, either a project has to absorb more or it can't be used for some other, you know, whatever else other initiatives are out there. So it's just really hard. And then if you go to option B, it's, you know, by our numbers, 1.3 million. So there, it is very significant. I, I want to emphasize that the real tool here is MFT. I've mentioned this several times, but I'll mention it again. This is really the, the best tool to provide that subsidy for us to develop. I think the goal should be 100% participation. I think that the goal of MFT should make up for the shortfall that's in the marketplace right now. I haven't heard that a lot, but I think that's really, really important to make, you know, all of this come true. So I don't believe that the MFT proposal here does enough in the current conditions. Maybe it does in a really, really good, you know, economic climate or a different climate, but right now, we need that because projects aren't going to be done. You know, last thing I just wanted to leave with is, you know, a lot of the projects now that are developed with all these buildings, you know, they're based on the past, you know, policies and rules, but, you know, for all the pluses or minuses, what is available now is a lot of choices. So the choices that we made to build the supply that this group and the pedestrians make were all good ones. There are two months of concessions out there, a lot of selection for renters. I, I understand that it may not be at the right level, you know, based on some of what I heard here from the public, but the bottom line is we need to create more housing, more supply, early and faster, and I'm a firm believer that, you know, although there are some improvements here, you know, that have been made, you know, recently, really the, the main takeaway I want to leave with this group is that developers need help because right now everything is stopped. And there has to be a recognition that, you know, I realize, you know, developers can be accused of being greedy, and there's all that sort of image, but, you know, that is the truth. We need help to get that supply built, or it's just not going to happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Devon Kellogg.
My name is Devon Kellogg. I'm a 30-year resident of Ed Hill near 104th Street. I also work and play in Redmond, and my kids attend school here. I'm here today speaking as a parent and a concerned citizen about affordable housing and how it relates to climate change. The reason this issue is so important to me and my family is that we have already experienced some of the worst effects of our changing climate firsthand. My uncle nearly lost his home to wildfire a few years ago and now has to evacuate every time there's a heavy rain due to risk of mudslides. His home insurance has also risen astronomically. Changing climate conditions are also contributing to increased costs everywhere for basic necessities such as food, water, shelter, and even gas refinement for those who are still using it. We all know this is a serious problem, and it's only getting worse the longer we wait to address it. I know that, we also know that the number one cause of the problem is heat-trapping gases, such as those that come from our gas vehicles and methane gas-powered appliances in our homes. I heard concerns stated in the past few meetings about potential tensions between affordability and green building attributes. I would ask that the daily living costs of the tenants and the greater cost of the community also be factored into this equation. Last meeting, you were, you asked, who bears the cost of affordable units? I would ask you to consider that the costs of inefficient, polluting homes would be borne by the actual owners or tenants in the form of utility bills, especially as methane or natural gas prices rise in the shrinking customer base, and in health bills as poisonous gases are in our living spaces, especially those which do not adequately, are not adequately cooled during our hotter summers with electric heat pumps. We care about equitable access to parking spaces. We should also care about access to efficient heating and cooling and non-polluting stoves. And when we're talking, for talking about cars, we should also be considering public charging access. These newer cleaner technologies also offer resiliency opportunities as batteries can power individual appliances and even whole buildings in emergencies. Speaking of which, gas furnaces also pose one of the greatest risks of destruction in a fire or earthquake event. Overall, insurance rates and even the costs of building materials themselves are increasing with the impacts of a warming world. Again, construction insurance costs are likely to be borne by the tenants, and of course, in a greater sense, by our children and our society. We need to break this vicious cycle. There's increasing evidence in recent reports from Rocky Mountain Institute and others that the cost of building electric cones are actually less expensive than the polluting alternatives. There are certainly more expensive, it's certainly more expensive to have to retrofit them later, again, falling on the homeowner or tenant. Please consider these factors when you're evaluating the vision of affordable housing in Redmond. I also wanted to add a note about the draft supplemental EIS you're looking at. I applaud the holistic look the city is taking for the environment, environmental impacts of growth. However, I'd like to draw your attention to the infill exemption, which would remove CEPA requirements not only for development in city centers but also for all zones allowing residential uses citywide, providing housing and middle housing for the next 25 years. We've got a fantastic planning team, but are we 100% sure that our codes and policies will cover all potential issues that might come up under waived CEPA reviews? Seismic and health risks from natural gas use in buildings are also not covered in the draft EIS. Please advise the council that these risks, to include these risks and not to waive the CEPA, and let's work together to, for affordable and sustainable housing. Thank you.
Next, we are going to switch to our remote people who will be calling in.
First, we'll be Jack McCullough.
Okay, we'll start with Jack McCullough.
Is my audio okay?
Yep, it is. Is this Jack McCullough?
Yes, it is.
Yep, this is Susan Weston with the Redmond Planning Commission for the Housing Public Hearing.
Excellent. Shall I start now?
If you could start by introducing yourself with your name and address, and then you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioners. My name's Jack McCullough. I'm a land judge attorney here in Seattle. My address is 701 Fifth Avenue, Seattle 98104. I've worked on projects in Redmond for 40 years. We have a bunch of folks doing projects in Redmond now and happy to do so. I just wanted to talk about the matter in front of you tonight. In 2015, I was one of the parties with the HDC, who you heard from tonight, who put together the Grand Bargain, the Affordable Housing Plan in Seattle, and I wanted to give you some perspectives on that. You're engaged in an experiment now in Redmond, and you're looking at permanent regulations, but you want to make sure these regulations be forward, not backward. 7% inclusionary at 50% almost doubles the current requirement, and your own studies indicate this is not going to work. You know, obviously, you've heard tonight, we're in a tough market, high construction costs, interest rates, bank financing is bad. Doubling affordable housing costs in this environment is only going to make new market-rate housing and new affordable housing less likely. It's been suggested to you that the market will be flexible, but, you know, this isn't right. There are only four actors who provide money in this process. The sellers are not going to move. It takes at least a cycle for them to absorb the cost. Investors are not going to settle for lower returns in the city. They'll move to a different city. Tenants, you don't want them to pay more, and so developers are the only ones that are left, and they have no margin in this current market. So I'd suggest that we look at a permit, at a temporary experiment instead. Let's look at 4% inclusionary at 50% AMI, which is similar to the current requirement, and do that for two years for 700 or 800 new units under the new code. See how it works. Get the market used to the concept, and then revisit it and potentially revise it and increase the requirement at that part, at that point. You know, in Seattle, with the Grand Bargain, we have raised literally hundreds of millions of dollars, and we've done it with the understanding that in order to achieve more affordable housing and affordable housing dollars, we didn't make sure that the market housing system worked. And I'd suggest to you guys, this is a connection that you're creating, and you need, if you don't make the market housing side work, the affordable housing side isn't going to work. But they both can work, and we're in a difficult market. So let's, let's take, you know, let's walk before we run. Let's figure out a way to do that. I personally will be happy to help you and the city staff in trying to make this work out right. We all are committed to this goal at the end of the day. Let's just do it in a way that works. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up, I believe we have Gavin.
Hello.
Hi, is this Gavin?
It is.
Great. This is Susan Weston with the Redmond Planning Commission for the public hearing on the housing.
Hi.
Hi. If you could start for your comment with your name and address, and then you have three minutes.
Great. Thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor Nichols and Commissioners. My name's Gavin Haynes. I'm representing the East Side Multifamily Policy Group. Our group consists of 12 multifamily development stakeholders that share a collective interest in creating housing at all levels in Redmond. As a group that includes developers that provide these units, I'd like to comment this evening in response to the proposed 2050 housing regulations to ensure effective housing policies are implemented. We all agree our region needs new housing units at all AMI levels to keep up with demand. As such, we appreciate the city of Redmond continuing these conversations to determine how to create more housing that is affordable to both lower-income levels and the broader workforce. To better achieve our collective goal, I'd like to bring to your attention a few suggestions. First, I'd like to thank the commission for adjusting the proposed parking requirement policies. We do encourage the commission to separate parking costs from rent and that it be unbundled. Several other cities such as Shoreline and Seattle require that parking be unbundled from rent to allow tenants to understand the actual cost of parking. Second, we ask the Planning Commission to consider the impacts of AMI thresholds and their impact on production velocity. With the current reality of the market, the city's own economic studies note that the proposed 50% AMI threshold would result in projects not being financially feasible and therefore not being constructed. If the AMI is set to this level, housing will unfortunately not be built, and this will result in a rise in rents since velocity will not keep pace with demand. We ask the other higher AMI levels be included to avoid obstructing velocity and to adequately support housing production for our workforce, in particular firefighters, teachers, and nurses that are above the 50% but desperately need housing. Finally, if the city feels it must include an inclusionary housing requirement, we suggest considering phasing in these requirements or a pilot implementation. This is consistent with the past practices in Redmond like Estera Park and has been implemented in other nearby cities. The benefit being housing production now while not foregoing the opportunity to increase inclusionary housing requirements in the future. Specific examples of the policies are included in our written testimony. In closing, we sincerely thank the city of Redmond and this Planning Commission for continuing to expand the affordable housing supply across the East Side and to, and look forward to continued opportunities to share solutions that achieve this result. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our final call tonight is with Cliff Cawthon. Cawthon?
Yes.
Hi, is this Cliff Cawthon, please?
Yes, this is he.
Great. This is Susan Weston with the Redmond Planning Commission for your public comment on the Housing Public Hearing.
Perfect. I was expecting your call.
Great.
So, shall I just proceed?
If you could start by just introducing yourself with your name and address, and then you have three minutes.
Indeed. Sorry about that. I've been watching, so I just cut to the chase. So my name is Cliff Cawthon. I am pronouns. I am the Advocacy and Policy Manager for Habitat for Humanity of Seattle, King County, Des Moines County. Our office is located at 500 Notches Avenue Southwest in Renton, Washington, Suite 200 98057. And I am calling in tonight because I would like to provide our perspective on the proposed affordable housing. And I want to just encourage you to move forward with your updates to mandatory inclusionary zoning program and other suggestions in the draft document. This, the intention of serving the most cost burdened populations is critical, and in order to fulfill that intention, one has to be intentional. While encouraging the development of housing across the continuum is critical, the open market alone will not produce the affordable housing that we need, that it just won't. Otherwise, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now, or we wouldn't have this crisis. That not just the suggestions around easing barriers to allow for better production of AUs as well as other density bonuses and things like that required, but a mandatory inclusionary zoning program that's robust enough to meet the need and the demand for affordable housing that's required. And we work with people who every day who are rent burdened, who are facing displacement and need stable housing now, grocery store workers, cab drivers, nurses, even teachers and other essential workers. In the document, the AMB options detailing the set aside percentages for rental and home ownership units under proposed changes to the mandatory inclusionary zoning program are admirable, but I would encourage you to combine the best of each option and making sure that we are both prioritizing homeownership and rental opportunities. We've been serving the community for 38 years as one of the state's biggest affordable, permanently affordable housing and particularly affordable homeownership developers, and it is critical to build, to building generational wealth and addressing the history of discrimination and barriers that people face with stable housing in, by emphasizing homeownership and giving that the support it needs. And really creating more affordable communities will help further desegregate our communities and make them healthier. So in short, we, like I mentioned earlier, we also support the other housing provisions to make it easier to build, and particularly, we have evidence of how that the improvements to prevent the zoning code around state-owned land can produce affordable units. Right now in Bellevue, our partnership with Holy Lutheran, or Holy Trinity Lutheran Church is currently underway with a significant, with a significant community development there, as well as our work with other state institutions and organizations in the region. And furthermore, we encourage you, I encourage you to be bold. Further eliminate barriers and costs to affordable housing projects, for sure. We definitely need you to eliminate those costs, but we need to be intentional about how we do this. So again, we strongly support the proposed updates and encourage you to think and go forth boldly so everyone can have a safe and affordable place to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. With that, I'm going to close the verbal portion of the public hearing, and written testimony will remain open. All right, and I'm going to turn it over to Ian for our study session.
Thank you. I would like to introduce Mike Stanger, who will be joining us. He works at ARCH, a Regional Coalition for Housing. ARCH is a partnership of the county and East King County cities, and they work to preserve and increase the affordable housing stock in our region. They are a vital partner in achieving equitable housing outcomes for our community, and Mike himself is an expert in the financial implications of policy changes to affordable housing. In addition, because of his position at ARCH, he helps provide us with a deeper regional context because he works with other jurisdictions as well. He is an expert witness here for you tonight, so as we go through the issues matrix, anything that we want to discuss related to these topics in front of us, as well as like kind of affordable housing 101 or economics of the implications, he can help support us with that as well. So with that, I will share my screen, and we can go through the issues matrix. And Mike, you are more than welcome to come up here. The first issue, this was related to about, kind of more information about the metrics themselves of how we're analyzing the projects. You betcha. The question was, can I zoom and look at that? And it is a discussion that we wanted to really clarify, so thank you to the Commission. The two main return or metrics are IRR and yield on cost, but as we heard from the audience, there's other metrics as well, but these we found are some of the most consistent across the industry. Any further questions?
Commissioner Aparna.
This is very useful, thank you. But I've said this before, just as the details of these calculations go in, we need to have just as detailed calculations for the fee and lieu. I believe, I've mentioned this before, and I think I've also submitted in writing, but I believe that if, if we are to judge a proposal fairly, we need to have both sides using, we can't compare apples to oranges. So the fee and lieu option for affordable housing should have some metric. See, the developers, for all these calculations here, in their pro forma are also looking at an opportunity cost. We are not factoring that in. We are not factoring in a lot of things in our basic calculations because it's a very here and now. But when we lose housing stock, it's going to cost us more a few years down the line. So just looking for something a little more like the, you know, and like from an NPV kind of standpoint to what would be further down, what it looks like for the city. If we think like the business community, what would it mean for us as residents? So it's something that we should consider if we want to make an actual decision, but otherwise, I would say this information is great. So this is more like another line item on the issue matrix, a separate comment. So, thank you.
So would you like to close this and open another line item?
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect, and I think we have a fee and lieu topic further down the issues matrix.
Right, maybe we can address that there.
Awesome, thank you. The second item was a consideration of the implementation of inclusionary zoning. What are the considerations? What are the options? And we laid out a few that we think would be the most likely candidates, but we could research other opportunities as well.
Thank you, this is great. It's closed.
Got it. Oh.
I mean, it's hers to close. I would just say it's closed in terms of saying, yes, these are other options, but like, this is what we need to be talking about, right? I mean, it's not closed in terms of the issue has been settled. The issue is like now we've added all these things to the table, as far as I'm concerned, because this is what we were talking about. We want to see other options of how we might implement this.
Yeah, but that, I think, this is information, but I think we need to then say this has to go into
Right.
the report.
Right.
Or, or at least have a discussion on this.
Right. So do with that information.
So from an information standpoint, it's closed, but from a discussion standpoint, it isn't, I guess.
So you would still like to see this called out in the final report?
Well, I think when we discuss the recommendations, they should be brought back up, so I don't know if it's closed or
Yeah, I mean, we don't know exactly what we're voting on yet, right? So somewhere down the line, this is the kind of thing we would want to be, something that we're, a package that we're voting on.
So what's your recommendation?
Actually, hold on just a second, I'm going to jump in here. What, how much do we need to settle this in order to close in the issues matrix?
We have the opportunity to discuss this at the next meeting, absolutely. We received some additional issues matrix comments in a written form from Commissioners, and we weren't able to get that into the packet due to the timing, so there's going to be more opportunity to discuss this. We, staff would like to remind the Commission that y'all have a busy schedule coming up with a lot of content at the meetings, but we also want to emphasize, we will take as much time as it needs to get it right. So just take those two considerations. I think we should leave this one open for now, and we can try, staff can look at some, some case studies and some analysis and see if we can provide a little bit more context for the Planning Commission to give us more direction next time.
Right, does that sound good?
That sounds great, thank you. And thank you, Tara.
Okay. Oh, yeah. This comment was about what are the impacts of lowering the affordability levels of the cost-controlled affordable units? There's questions about who pays for these costs. There's questions about who benefits when there's unexpected boons above the financial I think I'll turn over to our expert here. Mike, do you want to discuss?
Sure.
If you can press the button, whoops, it needs to turn green. There you go.
Okay. Hear me okay? Okay, thank you, and thanks for having me tonight. I think Ian addressed it very succinctly in his bullet points here. In the end, prices can only, you know, people can only charge what the market will bear. So naturally, owners will want to try to increase the market rate rents if they can, and presumably, they are already doing that. So if costs, any costs increase, then, and they're already charging the most that the market will bear, then, you know, they have to absorb that some other way. But let's back up and think about how the incentive, affordable housing incentive programs are set up. And I might even back up to the very beginning of Redmond's inclusionary program in 1993. And I don't know, I wasn't here, maybe some of you all were here. But at that time, the program began when the city raised height limits downtown and eliminated the density limits. So they allowed any, any number of affordable units within a building envelope. And in exchange for that, the, the ordinance required 10% of the units to be affordable at 80% of median, which is considered moderate income. And the story comes to me that at that time, there wasn't a whole lot of development going on downtown, and there wasn't expected to be for some time. It was going to take some time for the market to come to downtown Redmond and to be patient and understand that it wasn't the inclusionary zoning that was stopping development from happening. But then when the market came, the, the value from the increased density would enable, you know, enable the owners and developers to absorb the cost of the affordable units. And what was predicted is exactly what happened. Nothing happened for 10 years, 12 years roughly, and then suddenly, about the time that I started at ARCH, growth started happening all over. And now, all the housing you see in downtown Redmond is, give or take, 10% affordable. So that program is working. Now we're at the point again where the city needs to consider increasing development capacity to meet growth management standards and community needs, housing demand. And so the same principle is embedded into the staff's work here, which is to say that we're increasing the value to landowners and developers by increasing the density along with other provisions. And that, and the idea is to capture some of that value for the public in the form of more affordability. Either increase, you can either increase the set aside, the percentage of the affordable units, or you can reduce the AMI level, go for deeper affordability. Any combination of that will start to capture some of that value back to the public. And so that's what pays for the lower rents.
Commissioner Aparna.
Thank you for that, and that really helps us understand the context. Just out of curiosity, from a perspective of the proposals of, you know, the proposal A with, you know, 7% at 50 and then 10% at 50. We've heard from a lot of people tonight about how that is where the whole thing lies. They're okay with trying out maybe, you know, 7% or a 5%. Do you think a phased implementation is, since you said that the growth came in, I'm not saying that the past is going to repeat itself, but since this, this whole growth just takes time, that we would, should we be considering a phased approach where we know things are not great right now and projects are already underway, incorporate that and do that, that way, or do we just dive right in?
Well, in the, in, in Redmond's case, you have done it both ways. And downtown, the history that I mentioned, I don't believe there was a phased approach or what we would call pioneer provision involved. But when inclusionary zoning was brought, introduced to the Overlake area, there was what we called the pioneer provision, meaning that the first 200, I think it was, units were exempt from the inclusionary zoning, which helped some of them, a couple of those projects happen perhaps faster than they would have. So if your concern is that, you know, we need the housing sooner rather than later, and the current economics are such that, you know, won't allow that development in a timely manner, then you might want to consider having not, not what I would call a phased approach, in the sense that we won't apply them, or we'll add it sometime later, but that you could introduce it after exempting a certain number of units or a certain period of time. What I'm saying is that caution that you don't want to hold off on it and then try to adopt it later because it need, as I think Mr. Simpson said, by law, we need to adopt inclusionary or housing requirements contemporaneous with the benefit that you're giving, so.
Thank you, that's a helpful detail. Commissioner Van Nyman.
I just want to back up and clarify one thing from the, and I know we're talking about the issues matrix, but maybe we're kind of just opening things up for discussion, and how do we pay for it? That's kind of the whole deal here, right? When that study was put together and those numbers were calculated, in, in general, do all the stakeholders agree that that's, that we're, those are, that's an accurate representation of where we're at?
The stakeholders did provide an iterative review and update of the inputs, so there was consensus that the inputs are correct for the time they were finalized, and that the outcomes are also consensus plausible.
Okay. So we're talking about trade-offs in, we're going to make somebody absorb the cost.
I just want to back up and clarify one thing from the, and I know we're talking about the Issues Matrix, but maybe we're kind of just opening things up for discussion. And how do we pay for it? That's kind of the whole deal here, right? When that study was put together and those numbers were calculated, in, in general, do all the stakeholders agree that that's, that we're, those are, that's an accurate representation of where we're at?
The stakeholders did provide an iterative review and update of the inputs. So there was consensus that the inputs are correct for the time they were finalized, and that the outcomes are also consensus plausible.
Okay. So we're talking about trade-offs in, we're going to make somebody absorb the cost. And we're talking about trade-offs. We acknowledge the cost exists. There's going to be, somebody's going to eat it. Forget about who at the moment. And we're saying, the city quite confidently in its documentation says, we've provided enough counter-incentives to offset those, the affordability component. And, and yet, that's, I heard here tonight, one person mentioned the offsets, for example, in parking is sufficient to absorb the increased cost in affordability. And yet, we still hear quite a few developers who, I believe legitimately, are expressing, you know, grave concern over the feasibility of future projects, not because it's just their job and they want to make money, but because like, we're all in this together and we have to be making housing when housing is needed. Like, the demand is clearly there, but if we can't make it, you know, in a market-driven economy, if it's not feasible for them to develop it, they won't. So, again, back to the study, have, the Issues Matrix kind of just points generally to there's these offsets that we provided. Parking was one of the ones that was mentioned tonight. And you mentioned increased density. So again, going back to that study and the table, does everybody agree that those numbers are accurate? And maybe you're not the right person to be asking, there's people out here, but I mean, like, because intuitively, what I, what I understand from an economics perspective and what people are explaining, right, is that if you make this, if you make this not profitable, they won't, they won't build it. And yet, I'm also hearing, we've given enough offsets that it's not going to be unprofitable, or it's going to be, you know, like, we're talking super small margins here. And it's just not clear to me that everybody is in agreement.
Absolutely. There's a few pieces there. The first is, yes, the model shows, given the status quo, nothing was getting built. So even like, the regulations we have right now, nothing's getting built. And the, I think a second point that's important to look at is, when we're discussing about like, who's eating the cost, when we're updating our inclusionary zoning, it is by law such that we do have to offset it. So let's say we, I don't know, just, for example, the AMI does go down. That has to be associated with a sufficient amount of extra development that they are getting that money back. And it's also important to recognize our model for that baseline was only looking at a 15% increase in development capacity. Whereas when we're looking at a place like Overlake, that's getting like 100% development capacity increase. So even if, I'm trying to think of like, a clever little analogy, right? But it's like, if the whole pie gets bigger, even if the slice is slightly smaller, you're still getting a bunch of the returns.
So that actually brought up another one of my questions, which was, and I can stop asking questions at any time.
Maybe we'll keep going. Let's go through the entire matrix and then we'll kind of go around the circle so that everyone gets their chances.
I have lots of questions.
Yep, that's great.
So it sounds like we will leave this one, pardon me, it sounds like we will leave this one open.
I just want to make sure that Commissioner Noiva Camina has a chance to reply if she'd like to.
Thank you, Commissioner Weston. I'm still having about a gazillion thoughts running through my head about what, what's already been spoken from about 12 different perspectives. Give me just a second to go back through this real quick.
You also don't have to reply now. This is a lot to digest, and we can leave it open until next week.
That would be wonderful.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll leave that one open.
This next one was a discussion about what has gone on in Marymore? Because currently, the inclusionary zoning in most of Marymore does require 10% of units at 50% AMI. And we have seen development there. And these three projects that were identified did the 10% of units at 50% AMI. It is important to note that these projects all took advantage of the eight-year MFTE program. And that is, it helps provide extra finances to the development to make it more feasible. And it's also very neatly designed. The eight-year MFTE for Marymore has the same set aside, 10% of units, and the same level of affordability, 50% AMI. So as we discussed at the last meeting, this is kind of an approach some jurisdictions have explored of just making the optional MFTE have the exact same parameters as the mandatory IZ to just help get that kind of like 100% MFTE adoption. And again, it does take careful calibration, but Marymore has been a success, I would say, in terms of housing outcomes.
So what this, to me, this is, you know, it's a little bit of a pilot project, right? If we, if we're talking about, although, of course, the economics were different, the economic environment was different. But if this is, if we deem this to be successful, then, you know, that's kind of a bit of a, you know, it's a case study that says this is feasible. So I guess what you would want to know is, have there been, has there been less development than we would have expected there? Because that's what you're comparing, right? I mean, okay, so yes, it works, but did it work as well as we expected it to? You know, you're comparing it against something that isn't there, so maybe it's hard to know. But is development happening, happening in Marymore at the same rate? Is the type of development that we're seeing what we expected with this, with the 50% AMI?
As you noted, it would be, it would be tough to try and get a controlled experiment. I think that much of Marymore had already been developed at that time and was operating economically sufficient at those parcels, so a lot of the business parks and stuff. The large parcels that were relatively underdeveloped, we did see those get picked up real quick. We can, staff can take a further look at an analysis, see what's coming up. It also has to do with things kind of unrelated, right? Like, what are the parcel sizes? Like, what's the infrastructure? But I think from the high-level view of what staff saw at the kind of historical development, it seems pretty well done taking, growing about as fast as one would plausibly expect.
Because to me, that's really the question is, and I wouldn't want anybody to spend way, way too much time, but it is kind of the fundamental question of, we have this example here. Has this worked the way we expected it to? Has the, we have other parts of the city that we can compare it to. Is development occurring at the same rate? Are there developers walking away because they can't get what they need from, from it? I mean, it's your case study, so you really want to understand it pretty well. And so I would like to understand, you know, what it, what it, what was developed, what has been going forward in Marymore compared to, you know, percentage-wise? Like, is this growing at the same rate? Is this what we expected it to be? That's, if it's, if it's coming in under what you expected it to be, then there are developers who are staying away.
Agreed. And staff can try and take a look at that. I think one conclusion that we can take away, though, is that it didn't stop development, right? Like, the housing did get built. It was feasible.
Right. In that particular economic environment.
Yeah.
Commissioner Aparna.
I think the one thing we should remember is, I think this is a great idea to kind of explore, but I think we should also put the contemporary context into play. The interest rates are higher, there's inflation, all of that. This stuff got built before the last couple of years. So, so we need to keep current context in mind, because that's what they are, all the developers we're hearing from are talking about. So it's going to be a little trickier. It's not comparing, again, apples to apples. It's a little more like apples to much bigger apples, maybe. I don't know. But the, the whole point is that we have, if we are looking at it as a way to see that this is working, then either put the case study in its historical context, or bring it up to date and place it. Or we maybe talk to the developers there to see what their numbers look like and kind of extrapolate from there. But that would be an interesting exercise to see, because what we're hearing right now is because of the interest rates and all of the, the extreme economic conditions, it's, it's looking a little bit different. If we are exploring, that's how far I would go. So, thank you.
Commissioner Noiva Camina.
While we're thinking about the micro, as I pointed out at our last meeting, we also need to keep in mind the macro. When we're taking a look at the market, if we take any slice over the last 30 years, we're looking at, on average, 9% returns. That takes into account years where we've got gains of 22%, and that takes into account where we've got negative 22%. Overall, if we take a look at the market in the macro, we're landing at about a 9% return. So just keeping that in perspective across the board. And I say the macro, not just real estate, because of all of the factors that impact the real estate market. It's not as, like, only siloed, as it's, it's real easy for us to get into being. It's real easy for us to look at just the silo, look at it. You know, and, and we're talking about housing costs, and we haven't even talked about wage disparity. We're talking about inequities. But again, we haven't talked about the wage, which is a whole other impact of, of affordable housing.
All right. Further comments on this one, or shall we move on? All right.
This item was about the interest, kind of, the intersection between economic conditions and the perceived, like, luxury or not workforce housing. And the high-level takeaway is, we've always been a very affluent region for the last few decades. And typically, that has been associated with a housing deficit. So what opportunities exist for development have targeted that kind of higher-income household for market rate units.
Right. That's pretty much what I was getting at. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can close this.
Yes, and this, very similar to the previous discussion we had about timing. And per the previous discussion, I would recommend we keep this open and then just consolidate it with the work from the other timing.
Commissioner Aparna.
I really like this, and yes, this should stay open, but I have a suggestion. Just as we saw mirroring the future development plan in the Overlake regulations, right, where there is a point at which, you know, this Plan A is moved away and then Plan B takes effect. So we have the mandatory inclusionary zoning in a certain threshold, lower threshold now, not like pilot, but more like for the, pre-introductory offer, if you will, right? And then move from there. So maybe projects that are underway start with a lower threshold, move to a higher threshold. Maybe it's something like moving from the proposal A to proposal B. So we acknowledge and hear, but we are still trying to produce the units, but not at the same capacity. But that should be a date that we fix now. And I am in favor of a date as opposed to number of units, because there is a point at which, if they delay the projects, there is going to be, it is going to be more expensive for all of us to get affordable housing at a later date. So there has to be a date, like a year cut off, like maybe a couple of years into the adoption, or something like that, I don't know. So maybe that's one option I would like to add into the mix of these already there. It's sort of a variation of what is already there.
So I'd actually like to add in a counterpoint and completely disagree. Sorry, Aparna. I would prefer that if we were doing one, this is just my opinion, that if we were doing one of these options, that we stuck with the pioneer or pilot project where it is tied to a certain number, number of units, because I think it's important that the emphasis stays on building the affordable housing. So it sounds like there's still debate on that one.
I think we're going to need some, so Ian, actually, I had a follow-up question on this. How would we evaluate what is the best way to go, like, pros and cons of each approach here, like, so many different approaches? So what is the, how do you break the tie?
The pioneer provisions that I've seen applied to here in Redmond, Kirkland, I think there's another one, but I'm forgetting it, have been based on a number of units. I've had the, the same argument in my head, especially recently in Kirkland, because they did a big upzoning in the, for the 85th Street Station subarea last spring. I think the, the thing about, or one thought about setting it based on a timeline is that you're trying to anticipate when the economy would get better and start, you know, working the way that you wanted to and producing with the, the full complement of affordable On the one hand, if you, if you say it's two years or three years and you feel like the economy hasn't come around yet, then you get a chance to ask yourselves again, should we continue this or not? But if you get it wrong in the other direction, then you may be allowing a lot of development to occur and missing out on some affordability. So if you do it based on a number of units, then I think that sort of takes care of itself. You, you could, if it continues to be slow, you could increase the number of units, but I, I haven't seen any communities feel like they needed to do that. By the time those pioneer provisions were used, then things were moving forward, so.
So in terms of a study, any one of these tools would work technically? Is that, is that the conclusion? Are they all created equal? Or, like, let's say our goal, there are two goals, and probably have different provisions which will work for each goal. One is to increase affordable housing production in the near term, and one is to deepen and keep the affordable housing production going longer. So there's a long and there's a short, and there's a deep and there's a shallow, right? So if, if we had to evaluate based on, like, I'm seeing it as a four-by-four, like, matrix, right? I mean, two-by-two matrix, rather, then could we have an analysis which shows which option works best in each of these things? So visually, we can say, hey, you know, if we are looking short-term, quick, let's get these units in, this is the way to go. Because I'm trying to figure out, I see pros and cons in all of them, like you said, so how.
I'm not sure that there, there could be a scientific solution to that, but, but I'd be more than happy to work with Ian and the rest of the staff and think through that and try and present some, some evidence.
Thank you. Yeah, I know, it's, it's, it's going to be a little bit more of an art than a science. I get that, but it's more for us to say, if these are our goals, as collectively, we should first cotton on to a goal, and then we talk about the method. Right now, I think our goals have still to be discussed.
Well, so my personal take on this, and one of the reasons that I preferred the pioneer or pilot option, is just, I don't personally feel like I have the knowledge to time the market. And so when you're asking for which of these four break out into like, the best option that we can choose with the lowest risk and that gets all of our goals met, like, I don't think we know that, but I think a lot of it depends on the market. Like, it's very cyclical, we're not in a good spot right now, we don't really know when it's going to start to come back, and that's not really our job. So it's just trying to take parameters that we can work with and say, what are, like, what are our goals? What are we trying to get to? And which of these do we think we can write in a way where we're getting the affordable housing that we want, and also all the rest of the housing that the market needs? housing that we want, and also all the rest of the housing that the market needs, that developers want to build? And not standing in the way of progress, but also not leaving a lot of affordable housing on the table, because we need that.
I had, oh, sorry, I had a follow up.
Yeah, one here and then Commissioner Noeva Kamina.
Yeah, no, just a quick thing. I see that it's an option, but I don't see, because I don't see how many units or what percentage AMI. Like, I need specifics to say, okay, this is a good option. Because if we are saying, okay, we're going to do 5% at 70% AMI, it's different from the Proposal A. Like, I'm not able to tick and tie the options, which is Proposal A and Proposal B, which was given, and this, which has X factors everywhere, right? So we need like specifics to be able to evaluate such things, or?
I don't think we're going to get those, though. Like, I don't think we're going to get an exact model. We have one that was in our packet that we're reviewing.
Right.
But it's it's guesswork.
But that's not, if you're attaching the pioneer provision to that, are we attaching it to Proposal A or Proposal B? They're different. So those are follow up questions, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Commissioner Noeva Kamina.
Thank you, Commissioner Weston. Going back to the points that you were making about not being able to, that it's not our job to time the market, I completely agree with that. And reminding the commission that we're looking at 30 years, that it's it's macro, it's really macro. So getting into the the exact hows, right, but rather than rather than hearing like how it can't be done, looking at how can we still not only meet the goals, but also meet the themes that are set forth in our comp plan, which are being value based. And sometimes being value based means that maybe we fall slightly short of the goal, whatever that goal that we we state is, as long as we are adhering to the themes of the comp plan and the values as a city.
Commissioner Van Dymen.
So I would say with regard to which provision is best, that that's, I would like to see staff come back with some sort of approach that helps us, because they're really the experts, right? You said it's not our job. It's not our job. You know, they are the ones who are the experts and can figure out what. And what we're coming back to you and saying is, we don't like the all or nothing thing. I mean, that's what I'm saying. I don't want it to be, I personally am very reluctant to say, you know, we implement this immediately, because it's clear that we're going to stop, to me, that we are going to slow progress toward making the goal, back to the goal, which is, the goal is not affordable housing. I mean, it is, I guess, with regard to this particular provision, but the goal is housing. And housing for everyone is going to, you know, we have to have, we have to have affordable housing for people who can afford it today, because if you stop building housing, the house, housing prices go up for everyone. So to me, the goal is to make the whole system work, as we've heard from people, that we, this particular system that we're investigating is, it's entwined, right? If you can't make the market rate housing piece work, then the affordable housing piece won't work either. And then the other thing that I would maybe want to see is, we're looking at this citywide, and maybe, maybe that's not the right approach. You know, you mentioned downtown densities are only going up by, say, 15% because of the reasons we understand that we're not going up higher downtown, but they are going up in, way up in Overlake. So, you know, are, do we understand what we're doing when we say imposing the same rules on downtown as we do in Overlake? Maybe, maybe they are too different. Maybe we shouldn't be looking at them the same. So that would be another way to try and break it out. I'm just looking at ways that we can try and make this fit, because clearly, we want and need to address the affordability component, but we can't break the whole system. We, you know, I'm really concerned that we can't implement this and make it harder for developers to build housing for everyone right away. It's a long term plan, but the the needs are right now, and in the long run.
So I want to, maybe we're going to keep this one open, come back to it next time. We have two more questions in about five minutes, and I want to make sure that we're able to update the matrix with any additional new topics that came up from the public comments today. So maybe we can try to like condense a little bit on these last two, especially since we've already touched on them.
Excellent time management. And yes, given the breadth of public comment and commissioner discussion, I would recommend please continue to reflect on different topics and get any issues you would like to see addressed to us before, how about right before Thanksgiving? And then we'll try and get that included into the next packet. Perfect.
Does anyone have anything they want to add just right now? Is this a new topic, or is this a reaction to an existing one?
It's to the fee and lieu issue matrix number seven.
Your mic's on.
Fee and lieu issue matrix seven.
Okay.
Just wanted to add one more thing there. I would like to leave this open, only for the reason that I understand that the fee and lieu was used to fund the Together Center, and that's, that's great. But without further identification of projects, the answers are not there as to where those funds are parked and to, like, if we don't have tangible project alternatives that afford the same or better affordability, that's, that is a concern. So from a perspective of, okay, maybe it's there in some cases, it's used, but one, the calculations, which I've already mentioned, but two, it's, where would it go? Where would that money go?
May I address that?
Please.
Just speaking from experience here in Redmond, the city has agreed to accept fees in lieu of affordable units only in cases where they had a project that was ready to use that money. That's been the the city's policy, if you will. And it, there's no, they haven't collected fees in lieu just to put into an account and wait for a project.
That, that's good news, but I don't think that's explicitly written over here. So it might be something we add, so that it's, that's good news.
Does anyone have topics to add to the matrix? Commissioner Van Dymen.
One thing we haven't talked about that has come up in a lot of the public comment is what happens to the people between, say, you know, above 51% at that point? So I'm getting affordable housing today, and, I mean, maybe I, maybe those people don't lose their, their slot, but they move, they get a job, you know, and they want to, or they, they want to move for some reason. And now they're, so they're making 80%, they fall into the 80% AMI threshold today to qualify for that, but when they move, now they don't, because we've changed it to 50% AMI. Is that right? So we're leaving those people without any resources at that point? So you make 60% AMI, and you're above the threshold, and you're on your own? What are we talking about here?
Well, the proposal wouldn't affect any properties that already have a covenant on them if.
Okay.
Right. I want to make sure I'm not misunderstanding your, your question.
Okay, so the existing supply today stays.
Would remain.
At 80% AMI.
Correct. Or 60, if it's an MFTE.
Okay. But for, on a going forward basis, we would be looking only at 50%?
With the proposals as written for rentals, yes.
And so do we understand the demand? Again, now, let's forget about the cost side of the equation. Let's just pretend we're doing this. Do we understand the ramifications within that community for changing that? Can you, can you address what, do you understand what I'm saying, that like, we're talking about people who previously would have qualified and no longer would? Correct?
Well, it, it wouldn't affect any affordability limits in a property that already has them. So at LA, across the street here, has 10% of the units affordable at 80%. It would not, nothing would change there.
Okay. But on a going forward basis, now we're building, and it's 25 years from now, and we've only focused on 50% AMI, and have we, have, do we have some understanding of, of what that would look like for somebody who's making 60% AMI?
Well, the, the.
From a supply and demand standpoint?
The supply of six, of 80, 60 and 80 AMI units wouldn't be growing, presumably.
So now, are we creating a different problem?
If, if 50 AMI was the only choice.
So that's what I'd like to have some understanding of. That's what I would like added to the issues matrix.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else?
I think I, I second her point. It's pretty critical, because if you're dropping the thresholds down, at 60% AMI, it's still not affordable if they have to go now, look at a market rate unit, because there's nothing else available. So you're like, out there, right? So it's a question of maybe the, the supply side is shooting for 50%, but there's a levy on how it is done. I don't know how that works, because if, we're hoping for affordability. We can't say that 50% is going to remain 50% always. We heard from somebody, I believe, who was a person who qualified for affordable housing and got promoted to manager, got a little more wages, not significantly more, but then was, was out of assistance there.
Notes, I wouldn't speak, I can't speak to necessarily that situation, but in the affordable units that are created by land, land use incentives or MFTE, what we do there is we have a, a recertification level that is higher than the original level, affordability level. So if it was a 60 AMI unit, for example, somebody might qualify when their income is 55% of median. If their income grows to 65, 75, or, yes, I said, starting at 60. So we let it grow up to 80% of median in that case. We want them to be able to have the stability and enjoy some, you know, better income circumstances for a while. But if they then came back to try and sign a new lease and their income was above 80% of median, then they would either have to start paying market rate, and we'd, the property manager would substitute a different unit for that, or they could move.
So is this codified somewhere?
It's in the, it's in the covenants that govern each property.
Okay. Thank you.
And if we could also, on this question, if we could include again, that chart that had the estimated need for different, like, how, what populations are looking at what AMI, I think that would be super helpful, because those numbers, it's been a while since we've seen them. Thank you.
Commissioner Noeva Kamina.
Ian, just to make it a little bit more interesting and making sure that we've got the holistic picture, can we also get a rate of the growth of AMI? Because, I mean, we brought up, as a commissioner, Commissioner Van Dymen brought up a great point about if a tenant, if a resident moves, and they were at 80%, I believe that was correct, and, and now that they no longer qualify. In some instances, we've seen where AMI has outpaced to where if they were at 80%, but their wages did not keep pace with AMI, they're actually now closer to 50%. So if, having the rate of AMI would be great. Thank you.
Commissioner Sheffron. Commissioner Sheffron, we can't hear you. You're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I'm curious to know if it's appropriate to talk about density bonuses, or kind of bring us back to that discussion. I know that already proposed, there's a bonus proposal as it relates to, you know, lands owned by religious organizations. And tonight's testimony, and this is something I've been thinking about as well, is including density bonus opportunities for publicly owned properties as well as nonprofit owned properties. So, and I'm assuming that school district owned falls under the rubric of publicly. Would you agree with that?
I apologize. I only got like one out of three words. What was the question?
I think I can paraphrase, Denny. We're having speaker issues here. Tell me if I get it right.
Oh, I see.
Tell me if I get it right. So Commissioner Sheffron was asking about the density bonuses in the faith based properties, and specifically if those could also apply to nonprofit and possibly school district? Did I get that right?
Publicly, yeah, publicly owned. And then the follow up was, would a school district fall under the rubric of publicly owned properties?
Great.
Thank you.
We will research.
Thank you.
And I also wanted, that was one that I wanted to see added to the matrix, too. Site specific got brought up. I don't totally understand how that would work, but I would like to see, like, this seems like a real opportunity to add the much needed density, and especially the emergency beds. So I'd love a little bit more information about that.
Commissioner Van Dymen.
This is quick, and I see some of our developers have left, but for those who are still here, my question would be for follow up to them would be, this, this previous discussion about the, the other side of the equation, that yes, there is an increased expense, but that the city's position is that there's other sides to the equation that are making up for that, that you're saving money on other pieces of your development, including parking and the, and the increased volume with density. And how does that, how do those numbers overall affect the, the picture for, maybe not today in today's environment, but in, let's just say, in a better environment? That, you know, again, the city says, we're giving you something on the other side of the equation, but I don't really hear the developers so much acknowledging that, and I'd like to understand where that, what your side, what your position is on that for follow up next time around.
All right. One last one, and then anyone else who has things they would like to add can add them to over email.
Thank you, Vaishet. So I have sent a few comments via email, so that's separate. This is a new one. I was just curious, we heard about parking as a potential way to do this, to make it easier on the developers. So just out of curiosity, has something like this been considered where the 0.75 parking for affordable units is good, but then the parking ratio drops for market rate units, especially in high transit zones? So the reason I'm saying we shouldn't drop the parking for the affordable units is because they can least afford the time it takes to change multiple buses to go to the middle of nowhere where they might be working, whereas somebody in a market rate unit, maybe downtown Seattle, zoom, they get there, right? So could we have a tiered parking requirement for affordable? I mean, has that been studied, and can we look into that?
I will answer that at the next Planning Commission meeting.
Lovely. Everyone did such a good job. This was a lot of content, and we are going to hold it here, unless there is anything Ian would like to say to wrap up.
Thank you all for your attention and curiosity, and I also want to thank Mike for taking the time to join us.
Yeah, thank you for being here. All right, we're going to do one more topic. We're going to do one more topic, and then we might look at a quick break. Our next step is a study session on draft two of the participation, implementation, and evaluation element for Redmond 2050. And for this, we're going to bring Odra Cardenas.
Hi, good evening, planning commission. My name is Odra Cardenas, pronounced she/her/they in Spanish. So we're going to go over the participation, implementation, and evaluation element. So you last saw this element, can you see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
So you last saw this element in June, the first draft with the policies. And we got a lot of feedback from multiple stakeholders, planning commission, community advisory committee. And we've added all that feedback into the draft two. We also have added narrative and all tables and a lot of the template for Redmond 2050. So we can go over a little bit on what this element is. It's how we are going to be integrating public participation into the planning and other government processes. And it also addresses how we do the review, the review process, and how we are going to monitor and evaluate how our policies are working once the comprehensive plan has been adopted. So on general, the updates that we did were a lot to support effective and equitable participation, trying to incorporate historically excluded communities into the planning process, and adding a few new policies in several themes. Also trying to streamline and consolidate policies and that talk about broader terms for communities and equitable participation, removing some language that is not inclusive, like talking about citizens. So talking about all those updates that we've done for, for draft two. So what we heard, having a predictable development review process, we heard this from one of our stakeholders. So what we did was adding new policies, a framework policy, PIE four, and also a policy under that. So we had, so we have a more transparent development review process. We also got some comments, and I put in your packet the comment matrix of what we talked last time, and also other issues that were brought up by other stakeholders. And one of them was having like more intentional broad communication policy. And since we consolidated a bunch of those policies, it's actually in the PI three, in the second paragraph. Also trying to consolidate and streamline policy. So we went from 27 to 25, even with the new policies, with the four new policies that we added. Another little update was, you know, having more broader terms for, for communities and adding the tribal participation. So what's next? Just answering questions that the commission has or any comments that we can address right now? And yeah.
Right, commissioners, any comments or questions? Commissioner Parna.
I actually have a few comments which I'll email out, but one particular one that I want to call out is maybe part of PI nine or part of PI seven. We should consider promoting active participation in boards and commissions while removing barriers to entry. So it's very self-referential, but we kind of need more diversity and more participation, both diversity from a socioeconomic standpoint as well. So really would like to see some reference there. So, thank you.
Great. Anyone else?
Right, I'll jump in with a comment. I think this was mostly addressed by policy four, which is new, policy eight, policy 23, and policy 24. But I kind of wanted to bring it together. I think it is really important that Redmond is gathering metrics on who they're reaching out to. Because what I am seeing is, I think that there are a lot of quiet population groups in Redmond. I know renters is a really good example. I know we already are aware of language barriers. I know that different age groups were reaching out there. But it's just, if we are like serious about making sure that everyone's getting heard that we want to have heard, I think the only way you can do that is to measure. And so when you're saying, and I think Redmond, to be clear, is doing as a very good job in a changing communication world. Like, I think everyone is struggling with this, like getting feedback from busy people who might not be getting the information. Social media has changed a lot, like a lot of the outreach things of the last decade are in flux. But I just really want to make sure that Redmond is measuring and tracking who they're talking to, and then also comparing it to demographics and trying to figure out who they're missing. Because I think we're hearing very loudly from some people and then not at all from others. So I just, if, if those policies can somehow result in a more clear view of who we're not hearing from, I think that would be great.
Odra, I don't know if you want to go through the rest of the matrix and we can close out anything?
Yes. Of course. Let me just go into the matrix real quick. So here it is. I'll, I'll add the, what you were mentioning. So these are the inclusive terms that we got from the, some of our CAC, some are internal, like staff, and also planning commission. So I don't know if you want to go over the planning commission stuff. This was talking about open government because we consolidated from PI three to PI eight. So the PI seven was where we were talking about the broad communication policy. And it wasn't removed, it was just consolidated into PI three.
Okay, great. You can close that one.
Then there was another comment on separating, sorry, consolidating PI 10 and PI 11. And we kept them separate because they refer to different issues. So sometimes when regulations have not been updated, that's what we should do to implement the comprehensive plan.
That's a great answer, and I think it reflects a newer commissioner question. So thank you for explaining, and you can close that one.
And then another one was, oh yeah, PI 22 is where, let me see, it was talking about reimbursement for development review. And we already have that, so the way the policy was written was never implemented in the past. And we are currently, do have a fee for development review process. And I put in here the, the PDF, so you can see the fees that we are, we are collecting.
Yeah, I just wanted to check. I'm glad it wasn't implemented, and we can close that one.
And there were some text edits, like commas and capitalization. So I think we can close that one out because those were actually done live during the last meeting.
That sounds good.
And the rest are staff, so tribal consultation, development review process, having a transparent review process. And some of the language was brought up by the CAC.
Right.
And I'll add the rest.
Are there any additional comments tonight? No, I'm seeing a lot of nodding. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Before we get to the overlay incentive package, why don't we take a five-minute break? All right, so we will be back at 9:05.
Next up, we have our study session on the overlay incentive package for Redmond 2050. And I would like to introduce Becky Frye.
So as a quick reminder, overlay code package umbrella that was combined with the Redmond zoning code rewrite, part three of three. So we've addressed one and two. Part three is moving forward now and coming to you in December for a public hearing. That part three includes the green building program with Jenny Liebeck is here to walk through a couple of those changes. She did an update for you, an overview in August, I believe. And so she's here to just explain a little bit of the changes that have happened since then based on community engagement so that you're prepped before the public hearing. And then I'll follow up with a couple of slides. Due to the lateness of the day, we're going to try to keep it super short and just go over what's changed.
That sounds perfect.
Perfect. I can kick us off. So again, I am Jenny Liebeck. I'm the sustainability manager at the city. And I appreciate you having me here this evening. So again, I think you all hopefully remember just the general updates that we have made to the green building incentive program. And that's started through the phase two zoning code update. And so again, with this rewrite, really the big goals that we were trying to achieve was to align the program with our sustainability goals and really focus on outcomes. That was a key theme too, that we heard a lot from, from the planning commission as well. And so with this rewrite, we also wanted to create a standard program structure for, for green building that could be leveraged across the code to help create more consistency as well. And the great example of that is, you know, Becky pulling the new proposed program elements into the overlay incentive package. So we're seeing that kind of idea and that goal in practice tonight. So I think, again, I can just go through this really quick. The new program establishes a performance period. It has a penalty for non-compliance. We've created a really robust appendix, which outlines all the details to hopefully help really make our expectations clear. And then two, the new program structure is focused around, we have minimum requirements to participate, and then developments choose the additional techniques that kind of fit within their goals to help create more flexibility, which was also something we heard through the public comment period. And you can go on to the next slide, Becky. And so, so what changed since, since I saw you last? We made a few, a few updates to the program based on both the commission and the stakeholder feedback. The first being the need to really address embodied carbon. That was something we heard universally from a lot of different stakeholders. And so as a result of that, we added a minimum requirement to benchmark the embodied carbon of the, of a project, and also to demonstrate a 10% reduction. This is not necessarily a very expensive or especially challenging requirement, which is why we felt it was, it was a good play, it was good for us to put them in the minimum requirements. And it's really our hope too with this, that we can really start the conversation around embodied carbon and get folks more comfortable with it. And next slide. And then the other change, changes that we made included a small And the great example of that is, you know, Becky pulling the new proposed program elements into the overlay incentive package. So we're seeing that kind of idea and that goal in practice tonight. So I think, again, I can just go through this really quick. The new program establishes a performance period. It has a penalty for non-compliance. We've created a really robust appendix, which outlines all the details to hopefully help really make our expectations clear. And then two, the new program structure is focused around, we have minimum requirements to participate. And then developments choose the additional techniques that kind of fit within their goals to help create more flexibility, which was also something we heard through the public comment period. And you can go on to the next slide, Becky. And so, so what changed since, since I saw you last? We made a few, a few updates to the program based on both the commission and the stakeholder feedback. The first being the need to really address embodied carbon. That was something we heard universally from a lot of different stakeholders. And so as a result of that, we added a minimum requirement to benchmark the embodied carbon of the, of a project. And also to demonstrate a 10% reduction. This is not necessarily a very expensive or especially challenging requirement, which is why we felt it was, it was a good play. It was good for us to put them in the minimum requirements. And it's really our hope too with this, that we can really start the conversation around embodied carbon and get folks more comfortable with it. And next slide. And then the other change, changes that we made included a small tweak to the construction and demolition recycling threshold. So we lowered that from 90% to 60% based on, again, stakeholder feedback. And we heard too, that most, a lot of CND facilities actually aren't capable of recycling at a very high threshold. And so we just kind of recalibrated that number. And then we also added an optional technique around embodied carbon. Again, incentivizing developments to go beyond that minimum requirement that we establish about, beyond that 10% minimum requirement. And then finally, we absolutely heard the need for us to address water conservation. And we are actively working to identify a technique that will, that we can integrate into the program, but also that we can verify with our resources. It's just, we're finding it's a little bit trickier for us to be able to confirm. We can, we can specify it, but we need to also make sure we have a way to verify that that action is fulfilled. And so we're just trying to do more due diligence and make sure we get that right instead of just plugging something in. And so we are planning to include that water conservation technique in kind of the next iteration of this, which would happen with a code cleanup that's happening later this next year. So, so those are the big changes and I can hand it back to you, Becky, to go from there.
Before we go to the overlay incentives, do you have any questions for Jenny?
Sure. Jenny, thank you. This is looking great. I think moving to an outcome-based approach is, I think it's excellent. It's good for the city. I just had a question about the embodied carbon. Is there any leeway in terms of understanding? It's, it's not complicated as a process, but it does take a lot of time. So wondering if we can limit the embodied carbon piece because it's very new. And there's a lot of education which is required on how to use the tools which are out there. Maybe limited to five to 10 materials, like the biggest bang for the buck. Because there are, the framing materials alone and a few others are going to be the, the ones with the highest embodied carbon in any building. So we could pick maybe, I don't know. So I'll, I'll send you a note. And the water stuff also, I'll send you a note.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Van Eyman, what is deconstruction?
Deconstruction is if there is any existing structure there that a development will take down, that they go in and salvage any of the materials before tearing down the building. And they salvage them so that they can be repurposed either in that building or in another development.
As opposed to demolition?
Correct.
Commissioner Parna.
Actually, deconstruction is a little different from demolition. Because deconstruction is basically when you're able to take it apart and reuse either sections or recycle entire sections. So it's, it's the easy, it's the easiest way to dismantle something. So modular construction, like if you use welding versus screws or nails versus screws. Nails will, if you're trying to pull out a nail, it's going to damage. But if you use screws, you can unscrew it and so on. So it's a construction technique that can be undone, sort of. So.
Great. I had one comment that was just a compliment. There was a note in the margin about plans for a checklist at some point. And I just wanted to, I was like, yay, I'm so glad. Because it's, the document as written is great. It's looking like it's really coming together to me. I just think the easier, like, and more clear the communication is, the more likely we are to get people to wrap their heads around the incentive and actually use it. This is one that I really want to see used. So that checklist seems really important. I was really glad to see it called out.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, anything else?
I do want to share, one of the comments that we heard from a developer in our continued and ongoing stakeholder engagement was that one of the ways that the embodied carbon 10% minimum could be met is just switching the type of concrete. And he actually mentioned it's a no cost difference. It's just a smarter choice. So by setting that 10% threshold, he said, it's literally, they just changed the type of concrete and they can meet that 10%. So we're not necessarily increasing costs by setting that as a minimum threshold. We're just asking them to make better choices. That's great. All right. So the overlay incentive package, we've continued to make some edits on. Hopefully, I heard you're slightly interested in some of those changes. We incorporated a lot of your comments and we're going to continue to work on that. Especially the comments about the summary page and all of those pieces from the actual calculator's perspective. But from the actual incentives, we have updated and rolled in a lot of the criteria into the footnotes. We're continuing to do so, especially with parks. Some of those footnotes are just ongoing and evolving. I've also met with the Arts and Culture Commission last Thursday. And they're going to be providing feedback on the arts and culture related pieces and parts because that's their expertise. So we're going to roll their comments into the footnotes as well. We've added a lot of clarifications on the amenities. There were some questions that came up from planning staff about how sometimes parks and planning read things differently. And just making sure that we're as clear as possible from a review perspective of what that language means. As we've had several conversations, just making sure that that wording is fenced. And we'll probably continue to modify that to make sure everybody understands how, what that means. And we've added a lot of details, like what is an adult changing restroom and what does that mean? And just so that people have a better understanding of not just the line item, but what actually goes into the construction of that particular item. Then one of the other things that we were able to pull in is the comment about some of those child-friendly amenities. Aren't child-friendly without a restroom. So we made those conditional. If, in order to get credit, the extra credit, right? Not that you can't get credit for that item, but to earn the extra credit for being child-friendly, then you have to have a public restroom inter-adjacent to that facility. We have also taken that concept and folded it into all of the co-location with an educational facility, the hotel and conference center, the performance arts center, all of those big assembly spaces. Making sure that a public restroom and in the, the big assembly ones, that an adult changing station would be required. And again, for those big ones, folding in that they're required to the universal design checklist. So that anytime we're incentivizing those larger incentive places that are intended to be community spaces, that they're designed to be fully inclusive. So that is going, that's a part of where we're saying, you can earn the points for this. But to earn the points for that, just make sure it's fully inclusively designed. And so I think that's a really, another way to push those goals and make sure that what we're getting meets the needs of all of our community. And then we have added a lot of detail on what you earn. And so we've added the tables with the scale and just show at the different levels what you earn. So we had shared last week, you know, the, the major thresholds, but now we've actually got it all spelled out. So. We've also continued to have a lot of conversations with developers and we've started another testing round. So just to let you know, some of that testing will happen before the December public hearing. Some of it will happen after. So we'll just, we'll keep that going. We are going to have a lot more conversations. Just keep that in mind. Changes to 2112 are also been published and we re-advertised them. They are open for written comment based on our previous series of public hearings. But there's enough change going on that we just re-noticed that, hey, there's been some changes if you want to be a part of the continued public hearing. So for December 6th, we've highlighted a couple of things about taller, the building height, how you read it, understanding how that means. We've added some exceptions in there as well. And we've, again, as Jenny just mentioned, we're, we're moving that 10% carbon reduction into a mandatory category. So just again, a better choice, not an additional cost. We felt it fit with the mandatory green building requirements for overlay. Some of the unique things here that we're playing around with is the taller buildings. As I mentioned last week, we're looking at the, increasing the height up to 30 stories. And then at the same time, we have all of these amenity spaces that might not all fit on the ground floor, right? We might want to, how to push those to higher levels. And so one of the developers recommended a tool that Seattle's been using to get those top floor amenity spaces. And basically, the building height has a height limit. But if the top floor is amenity spaces, that top floor can go above that building height. And so we've rolled that in here to play with that as well, as another way to just kind of pull up those amenity spaces. Again, the requirement for that incentive is that they be publicly accessible so that it has, it has to be not just a private space. And then it changes to 2160. There's quite a few in there. That's the design standards. Again, we were talking to the mass timber and the tower developers. We got some very specific feedback on everything from the illustrations to the numbers, right? So we just went through and we did some cleanups in there to match what we're seeing in Bellevue and Seattle and Kirkland and, and all those places in the area, just to make sure that the numbers work. And step backs and spacing between towers and the floor plates. So there's just some technical details in there that got changed to match the feedback that we got from our stakeholders. And several of them provided some very, 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 very detailed notes, pages and pages and pages and some examples. So it was extremely helpful. So. So next steps for Jenny and I, we have advertised the public hearing for December 6th. We are both continuing to draft a few things. Jenny's continuing to draft the water conservation pieces. Director Helen asked me to draft some regulations about incremental transitions to the higher standards. As a part of the conversation about, well, that minimum threshold for a future development plan is 70%. And they were like, oh, wait a minute. What if I just want to add a new building because I got plenty of space on my property? Does that kick, do I have to demolish my current building? So I've done this for another community. She did it for Bellevue. We pulled in a lot of examples. We're going to create a draft transitional code, right? So that how you can not necessarily do everything all at once. But if the financing today won't do a massive development, but you want to do something on your property, you can do a little bit, just as long as that little bit is going towards the new standards. So. That will come to you early next year. And then, as I mentioned, we're doing continued testing. I've got a couple of folks who are drafting up some example projects so that we can run it through not only the incentive package, but the development standards as well. And we're going to be taking that out and doing some internal testing, external testing and moving that forward. All of those last little pieces, what we'll do is, once you get through all of your spring, we're going to have like comeback together and take a look at, now it looks, what does it look like as a whole? We're going to have to make some adjustments, right? And we're going to have to fill in some gaps that we've identified through that process. So we'll wrap back in all of these last remaining little things, anything from testing that we need to adjust. We'll wrap that into what we do for another public hearing after you've done the bulk of your spring conversations. Rather than trying to sprinkle in more overlay pieces here and there, let's get you through your solid topics and then come back. That gives our development testing a little bit longer to run through scenarios as well. So the other thing, just as a reminder, is we're continuing to do engagement on community design and the equity and universal design conversations, like our event tomorrow. And so we do anticipate that we'll get new ideas that will come out of that. And so they'll, they'll filter into future drafts as well. One thing that's come up, for instance, is if we reduce the parking, we're also reducing ADA parking because that is based on a percentage. And so we don't want to eliminate ADA parking if we're eliminating. So I mean, like, there's some challenges that we need to kind of work through. Other ideas for incentives have popped up from an accessibility standpoint. Like, how do we get around town if you have to constantly charge your wheelchair and there's no place to charge your wheelchair? So there's thoughts about different ideas, but I have been telling everybody, there's set one and then we'll continue. So it's plug and play, the new structure. So it's really easy to add new ideas over time if we don't catch it the first round. So. Hopefully, that went quick. On your agenda, we had 20, 45 minutes? So we tried to zip it up. If you have any questions from what I presented today, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we'll just head into our public hearing process on the 6th.
All right. Does anyone have any questions now? Commissioner Parna.
I will send out a couple of comments on the water conservation piece. But I just wanted to ask about the housing stuff that we're doing, we just kind of went through. So if something changes there significantly, would that impact like the calculator or the development regulations?
No, and yes. It won't impact my stuff at all. But we have been doing some analysis and it might impact some things on Ian's side. But we've just ran the numbers and the numbers look really good. We analyzed just the straight up impact of the rezoning without doing the incentive package, without doing parking. We'll talk about that at a future meeting, just to share all those numbers and ramifications, but it's looking really good. Like, we have, we have no issues on my part on that. And then because that is the base requirement, anything that we add on with the incentives just makes it even more attractive. And the parking reductions and all of those other things can roll back into that as well. So we'll have some additional conversations about overlay and affordable housing at your next public hearing or future hearings. I'm not sure how Ian's going to schedule it. They do tie together and they relate to each other. But they are also mutually exclusive to a certain extent because I already have my set base rezoning and development standards, and we have this incentive package. So the required is just going to land with whatever we choose to do in 2120.
Great. Anyone else?
I have a very quick background question. I was trying to learn more about mass timber independently, just because that's a new term to me. And then kind of like realized why it's a new term. So I was wondering if there's more information about like specific building codes that have to be followed? Or is there standards body? Or are there links that you could send that are just like, this is what we mean by this? This is the definition?
I can bring that to your next meeting, some additional information on that. But yes, it is a separate building code. And so there's a different way of construction. And there's a couple of different types of mass timber as well. And so we can bring some information and some examples on that and what we mean and why we want to bring it. We can provide a little bit more feedback at your public hearing on the 6th.
It could be a really high level, but it would just be nice to know exactly which definition we're working on.
Yeah. And it's really exciting. It's a way to capture a lot of what we have as our goals, including our environmental and sustainability action plan goals.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, all right. That's it for me. Thank you so much. We'll be back on the 6th.
Great to see you. Oh, that's me. All right. Next up is our study session on draft two of the capital, capital facilities element for Redmond 2050 and draft two of the utilities element for Redmond 2050. Just looking at the time, Glenn, why don't we try to get through both in 20 minutes? But if it's, if that's tight, then we can stop at 10 of for updates?
Yeah, it's totally up to you. As you recall, at the last meeting, we actually went through the presentations and gave the updates of what was new. And I just wanted to give, just, just a reminder that we also received some questions and comments specifically on the utilities element. We added that to the issues matrix, you know, for, for future answering. Also, on the natural environment element and the critical areas regulations, we also presented on that and gave a brief in on that. Same thing that we also took down some of the questions and comments related to that. And that will go into an issues matrix. And we just also wanted to note that regarding the critical area regulations, that will actually be a separate issues matrix because that's on a slightly separate track, the natural environment element. With those statements said, we do have some issues matrices from the first draft on capital facilities and the utilities elements. And we could go through those or, or we could just move on.
So what I'd like to do, I think since the natural environment is not on our agenda, we're not going to do that one tonight. So we'll stick with capital facilities and utilities. And maybe we can work through the matrices for each of those. And if people have additional questions, we can try to get them captured. Does that work? Okay, that's the plan. Great.
Okay, let me pull up the capital facilities issues matrices. And there weren't that many question, question comments on that, so hopefully. There we go, sorry. All right. I'm going to zoom in for everybody to better see. I won't read all of these. The first, the first. first, the first was just regarding the police and fire level service standards. And I believe Chair Nichols, who's not here, you know, some of that was some of hers. But also Commissioner Nueva Camina had some questions regarding that. So the response, a pretty detailed response is in the issues matrix. So I guess the question would be, are you satisfied without any follow-up questions? I don't recommend closing because-
No, we'll leave it open until Chair Nichols is back.
Chair Nichols is not here, so.
Would you, is there anything that you would like to weigh in on this, on your part of this question? Or is it?
Oh, I'm sorry. With, with it, I mean, the question was, how do we determine community expectations? And what I'm seeing in the staff comments is that we don't have anything to measure what those are. We can, it's moving target, and we can at best guess. Going back to the conversation we're having about engagement and how we, we measure engagement, we know that there's a large population of our residents, of our community, that we're not hearing from. So it gets tricky when we start using terms like community expectations, because what is that based off of? And, you know, staff clearly defined it right. Like, community expectations is not a defined term with measurable metrics.
So do you have a proposal here? Would you like to keep it? Well, I suppose we're keeping it open anyway.
Yeah, we're keeping it open. Yeah.
Okay.
The second issue was related to just kind of a understanding of impact fee exemptions.
And this can be closed. Thank you.
Okay. Just make a note of that. Number three was just kind of a comment on regarding maintenance of public facilities.
Now that there's the text, I think it's more clear. I don't, I still don't know if we need a policy specifically for it. I think the maintenance is a really important part of the long-term cost.
Yeah. To better clarify, it's very embedded in all our, this, the policies here cover the fact that the maintenance is actually like, there's like four pillars of kind of how we do all our capital facilities in terms of prioritization, funding and everything. And maintenance is like that big main one. It's actually, sometimes internally, it's the highest one first, you know, in terms of sidewalks and things like that versus repairing sidewalks versus building new or something like that. So.
Yeah, it's, I think Redmond's doing it really well right now. I still would like to see it specifically called out as a goal in the policy because I, I would hate that to lose that. I think it's something that's important to have baked in.
So with that comment, do you want to keep that open? I, you know?
I mean, how would you propose?
We'd have to circle back with Public Works and everything. They found that the policies were sufficient in that regard. So I'm just, I'm not sure.
I didn't see this actually captured in policy. I only saw it in the narrative text.
We can go back and research. Yeah, I just don't have any answer for you. Sorry.
We'll just leave it open then.
Yep. Number four, again, just kind of provide some context on-
You can close. Thank you.
You can close that?
Yes, please.
Okay. And then just kind of related to format, and that's number five there.
To me, I personally have a preference that if it's something that we're worried about, we're either pointing to a list of known natural hazards that's maintained somewhere or else spelling it out in the policy. So like, natural hazards is a very, like, umbrella-ish sort of term. And I get that that might be by design, but I think it's when we know that there are specific things that Redmond is concerned about preparing for, I think it's good to list them. It's not that extensive a list for the most part. Or maybe it's captured in the GMA, or maybe it's captured in King County somewhere.
Well, the city has its own emergency management program, and there's a whole natural hazard mitigation plan, and there's a whole separate function. Really, this just kind of helps for our functional plan development of topics that need to be addressed. So spelling out very specific things kind of limits, because what if another issue appears, becomes more high priority? But then, it's not in the list, and then people will get confused. And then also, different functional areas have different hazards. They might actually be more impacted, right? A water system might be differently impacted than, say, a park system or a building or something like that. So remember, the intention of this policy is to provide, based on the GMA requirements of what we're considering when we're looking at our capital facilities planning.
Does the policy drive the plans, or do the plans drive the policy? Because I thought the policy should be the top-down-
This is really capturing what the GMA requirements are in order for us to put a capital facilities list. It's our capital investment strategy, which is our long-term, 25-year kind of plan and thing. I would say the functional plans usually have multiple requirements. One, part of it is to meet these GMA requirements. But separately, a lot of these functional plans also have their own state, federal, other type of requirements that they're also meeting. And you might recall that, for example, the water system plan. Part of it is to kind of help meet our growth management, related to help identify our capital, like, capital facility needs for 25 years. But they also have requirements with this Department of Ecology, the Department of Health, and other agencies like that, while also meeting other federal requirements. So these, these functional plans have, meet a lot of different purposes. For the terms of regarding, like, through the comprehensive plan, really, the intention is to meet the GMA requirements. And that really boils down to the capital facilities list, a project list, to a certain extent.
But shouldn't that be driven by the policy?
We can, we believe it is. It comes from the Growth Management Act, that is the policy.
Okay. So where are the natural hazards defined?
For every community, it could be slightly different, different counties in Washington State. But generally speaking, that would come out of the hazard mitigation plan or just in general planning for the city. Again, different functional areas have different concerns. So this is a general policy for all, like, providing guidance towards our functional plans and our capital facilities planning.
Okay. I guess what I'm just driving as, what I really liked about the previous version of this document is that it was very specific about what we're trying to prevent and prepare for. And I liked the specificity of that. I thought that was useful. Now that all of the previous things have been removed, and the only thing we're talking about is climate change. And I think that that's also valuable, but I'd like to see the previous list in addition to that. Because I don't think it's that many hazards. It's, it's a pretty small list. I think they would fit in with policy.
The fear though is that, I see your point. Remember, two intentions of this comprehensive plan was actually to cut down on policies and consolidate. But the second concern is that, remember, we only update these every 10 years. If another issue emerges, that's going to create a whole comprehensive plan amendment process to add a bullet point. That can be a two-year process. And to a certain degree, it adds confusion, right? If a new issuer emerges, you say, well, why is that not included in that bullet list? Does that mean we're not addressing it?
Commissioner Arpana?
I think one way to address this would be to have the list in the narrative on top, to say that these are the things that we're talking, when we talk about the hazards or something. So it's not part of the policy, but it's there, referenced. So people can see the list as it stands today and say that, and anything else which comes our way kind of thing, you know, as, as insurance, like, activities, like, God-willed things, right? I mean, so leave it open-ended. For me, CF2, there was one point missing, which is climate mitigation for the facilities. So we've talked about resilience, right? But, and we've talked about sustainable operations. But climate mitigation is a completely different ballgame because you are trying to say, if there is a flood, are you designing your capital facilities to keep the floodwaters out? It's, it's a little bit resilient, but not quite, you know? So the mitigation piece should be here as part of the framework for the capital facilities plan. That's what, so we could leave this open till we get-
We can follow up the Public Works folks and kind of get a better sense.
Yes.
Yep. And I like the idea of adding the definition to the narrative text. That would work for me, but I just, I want it, when we talk about natural hazards, I don't just want to leave that dangling. Because I don't think it's that significant a list, but I think there's huge implications if people forget one. And seismic risk is a pretty big risk. So I, like, much like, climate change is a pretty big risk. Like, we don't want to only be calling out climate change and then getting rid of the other list of things that we want to prepare for. Comments on other parts of the document? Commissioner Arpana?
I've emailed some of this already, but I think we need a little more emphasis on resilience for CF6. We need a little more information on what that looks like when we talk about planning the level of standards and what that resilience means and what that service level would be. Sorry.
Trying to find the policy that you're referring to.
So looking at the service levels and the resilience levels for CF6, and for FWCF1, we should have the word resilience in, let me just get you the exact, there is a word, there is something on sustainable, but we need resilient with it.
Sorry, I was on CF6. Which one are you referring back to now?
Yeah, so CF6, we talk about level of standards, right? But we don't talk about it in terms of, like, metrics, right? These are the things which we are expecting to happen. But if it doesn't happen, there's a metric associated with this. There's a column missing in that table. That's how I see it. Where we talk about how the systems are working and how the systems would stand if there's a problem, right? So.
I think that might be a little slightly off-topic. The level of service standards really just helped define the capital facility needs. It's not really an analysis type of thing.
True, but then if you're-
So like a water system, for example, the, the inter-seas standard is a flow volume that meets instantaneous demand together with projected fire flows. That's pretty much the standard for any water system anywhere.
Right. But, like, in my mind, when you provide a level of service standards, you're also planning for the worst-case scenario there, where there is some level of service standards or something where you say, here is where you go to if the system has failed. Some kind of direction as to what's going to happen, right?
So are you saying, like, an emergency fallback?
Yeah. So even if it's a direction to say that the emergency plan is going to address this particular issue, it has to be, like, which section of the emergency plan? So we know that these systems, if they fail, we've already planned in the emergency plan. So we are tightening up the emergency plan indirectly, right? I mean, not indirectly, actually, quite directly. Because we're saying that, here's a wastewater system, a level that allows collection of peak wastewater discharge plus infiltration and inflow. If a system fails, in case of failure, where would I look? So I'm-
Regarding stormwater, for example?
Right. So you need to cross-reference what happens in a bad situation. Like, I'm feeling not very optimistic these days, as you can see.
Yeah. I'm just trying to, trying to picture how this fits into what the state requirements are for capital facilities planning, really what the intention of this element is.
Right.
And it's not really related to kind of emergency planning. This is really about capital facility, like, what our needs are and kind of what our funding is over the planning period.
True, but then, my, my way of looking at it is this. The capital facilities are the heart of the city, right? If, if this place fails, we're all in big trouble, okay? So we need to know, if the state is saying, do X and show us what you are planning for and how you're funding it, you also want to go that extra mile and say, hey, we've outsourced our capital facilities by rendering these plans stronger. What, it may not be in this document, but it has to be referenced somewhere.
Commissioner Nueva Camina?
Commissioner Arpana, is that, my understanding is taking it then from a level of service standards and then implementing essentially an SLA, a service level agreement. Like, a service level agreement. Like, here's, here's our service, our level of service standards, and here's our service level agreement. Is that?
Sort of like that, but it's more like a way of saying, we have a backflow preventer. Okay? So if we agree that the capital facilities are the heart of the city, and we need the city to, these facilities to function intact, and all this, all these policies are laying out what those things are going to look like, like, the stormwater plan will show what the stormwater system is going to do, and you're calling that out over here, right? So where is the emergency point of the stormwater plan? That should also be referenced here. If, if there is a section inside the stormwater plan which deals with emergencies, call that out. But we need to know that we have backstops for everything here. At least, that's how I see the, the purpose of this is not just to meet the GMA standards, but to go forward and build a resilient city.
I definitely see that point. I don't know if it would be in CF6, but I think calling out the need for an emergency plan, like, we probably don't need a emergency plan for, like, parks and rec, for example. But there probably is a subset here where we do need emergency planning. So is that captured somewhere in this document?
We'd have to check to see if that's even in, like, in the scope of comprehensive plan. I know we do talk about emergency plan, and we do have some bullet points in there. But again, as I note, this is really about long-term capital facilities planning and funding. That's really just, this provides the framework for that. You know, a lot of emergency planning and things like that are more operational. So that's where it gets a little, like, where's the line between comprehensive plan, really, which helps define, like, our land use? A lot, comprehensive plan, and really, first and foremost, is about land use planning and kind of the zoning code, as you kind of heard, and stuff like that. But that's also the amount of infrastructure needed to support that development. And that's really what this ties into and kind of how we frame our financing. So in terms of, the city has a robust, we have a fire department, we have an emergency management department, they, you know, do hazard mitigation planning. A lot of that safety is embedded. Lots of aspects of our city operations and things like that. And that's why I'm just trying to, like, trying to think right here aloud to a certain, it was like, you know, and I understand, I totally hear what you're saying too. And we're just like, okay, how is, how is that actually woven into, like, a capital facilities element or some of the other elements?
Absolutely. So maybe what we could do is open up-
Because you kind of talk about public safety, really.
Right. An item on the issues matrix, just to come back and say where that information lives, whether or not it makes it into this document.
Right. And if it's not going to fit in this doc, where would it- Right, and if it's not going to fit in this doc, where would it sit? See, my way of looking at it is this document should reference where it sits, even if it's in the narrative, you can say that all these different aspects of capital facilities, their emergency operations and the resilience piece is dealt with in the individual plans, even if it's that much, or if it can be more specific and get into more specifics with this table, that would be awesome. So it's, I'm just protecting the heart of the city.
Yeah.
All right, guys, we're at our 10 minutes. Does anyone have any additional things to add in for capital facilities? I think we're probably going to have to bring utilities back again. I'm sorry to bump it.
No worries.
Any additional comments on capital facilities? Okay.
Okay.
All right, so I think we're going to pause here and go to our Redmond 2050 update, the monthly update with Jeff Churchill.
Good evening, everybody. Doing this really late in the evening is going to be perfect because my update's going to be about long meetings. But first, I wanted to share with you something very fun. As you know, we have printed hundreds of postcards, maybe more than hundreds at this point, and brought them to the library, but also some businesses around the community. And we picked up a full box of them at the library today, which was exciting. I did not bring the physical postcards with me, but even better, they are online on the Redmond 2050 webpage, and there's, so there's this whole carousel of photos here, so I would encourage you to go look at these on your own time. I think it's great to kind of see people's aspirations and what they want Redmond to become in their own voices and in their own handwriting. I think there's just something really special about that, so please go look at that as you have time. Okay, but now for the real fun, which is, there's, we have just a lot of work coming our way in 2024 to get to the end of the Redmond 2050 update process. And tonight is a great case in point where we have full meetings and as we are looking into 2024, the meetings are going to be pretty full, probably through like May. And then there's things that we don't know, so maybe longer than that, but based on what we do know through May. So I wanted to pose some ideas that you can either provide input on tonight or think about as ways to handle that. There are a few things we can do. We are already planning to hold special meetings on the fifth Wednesdays, at least in the first half of the year, to take advantage of those opportunities as they rise. We can also consider lengthening regular meetings, starting earlier, ending later. I'm not going to tell you my opinion, at least not yet. We can also consider holding other, meetings on other Wednesdays. And we can also do the best we can to manage the time that we have to get the work done that is before us by staying just kind of laser-focused on what's in front of us. So all of those are options, it could be a combination of those things. And as I wrote in the memo, we just really appreciate your commitment to this. 2024 will probably be the busiest year, together with, you know, some of 2023, since the last time there was a major update, which was like in 2011. So congratulations, you got the lucky roll of the dice when you were appointed to the planning commission, but we really appreciate it. So that's my speech.
Amazing. Do people want to provide feedback now or should we just ponder? Everyone looks like they're pondering.
I mean, I would be open to earlier meetings. I don't know how early, 6:30, 6:00, like, what are we talking?
I'm open to being very laser-focused.
I think I would prefer more frequent meetings because I think we reach a point of diminishing returns in terms of input. I'm going to come in one Wednesday extra or two Wednesdays, whatever it takes, because these are very weighty topics and if it feels long, if it's long-range planning, then we have to give it that much thought also and can't just whip it out the door. Denny.
Commissioner Sheffron.
Thank you. I'm curious to know what Jeff is, and staff is proposing. I'm willing to come earlier, but I don't know about more frequently, but that's just me. And again, it taxes staff to some retreats to know what their feeling is.
I think more meetings are more packets, so there's definitely an added workload to have additional meetings. Longer meetings, I think, I heard, I saw a lot of heads nod about like diminishing returns, about stuff later the night gets, I think that's probably true on the staff side as well. I mean, I think option A of like being laser-focused is the most attractive, right? Because it's, you know, gets the most done in the least amount of time. I think a lot of it is what's possible. You all have lives outside of the planning commission. I don't know what's going on before this meeting starts in your life, you may not have time to come earlier, maybe you do. I don't know what you do on the other Wednesdays of the month. So that's going to be probably the biggest consideration.
You know, I noticed that prior to start some of these meetings, there's email exchanges with points of views or considerations. Could we consider that as being a component to... I have the mic up. I have, I have...
I'm sorry.
Could we, could we use the email exchange as a component to getting more done, being laser-focused?
You can, you can send email to staff with like issues and to provide feedback. You can't communicate with each other over email because, because that would constitute a public meeting.
The reason why I oppose that is because some of these, some of these topics, they're very lengthy, they're very weighty, and you don't do a whole lot of justice by rushing through it. And so to the extent with which some of the meaty feedback can be provided via email to staff, we might be able to get, get more done with the time that we have.
My, I totally agree with that. My personal preference, it's very hard for me to get here before 7:00, just due to family schedules, and I do notice we sort of trail off around 10:00, so, or maybe 9:30, so the longer meetings isn't attractive. One thing, I also completely respect the difficulty of the packets for both you and for us. One thing that I could see being a thing is if we have a published packet and then an overflow session and if there's any material, study session material only that we don't get to on a previous Wednesday and we can get quorum a following Wednesday, then overflowing the earlier packets so we don't republish. I don't know if that would work, it might be overly complicated, but it would at least help the packet piece. Commissioner Arpana.
On a separate note, I think if so much material is coming our way, and I floated this with the vice chair also, is to have in the, what do you call that, the agenda and the packet material, to have two lines of the material for each topic, one with the presentation, the memo, the presentation and the issue matrix, and all the technical documents on a second line or a space in between. So what happens is if there are seven topics on the agenda, we are, and we are, we don't have that much time to go through the technical documents, having all of them bundled together is just very, it's overwhelming and confusing because you're opening the same tabs over again, but having them cataloged right there, this is the memo, this is the presentation, this is the issue matrix, at the very least, these three need to be done, that'll get us through faster. Otherwise, we're like looking at the technical report or the technical committee recommendation, whatever else is offered. People may do it, may not do it, but at least it's in a different line so we can get through that. And another one option to build efficiency would be to, and this, I don't know if we can do it or not, but is basically have published material, I don't know if it's legal also, so that's something you need to check, but if we can publish material a week before. So typically, all the material comes, the packet comes in on a Friday, but if we have the material on the Friday prior, so there's a one-week lag, right? Then we get time...
I'm sorry, I just noticed the time. We have a curfew at 10:00.
Yeah, you need a motion to extend.
Can we, can someone motion, please, to extend for seven minutes?
I motion to extend for seven and a half minutes.
All in favor, oh, no, no, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I think basically there are a few options for us to get the reading done, but...
But that's, that's a separate issue than meeting length.
Yeah, that's a separate, but it also leads to us getting things done. If we have more time, then maybe we email our comments in earlier to staff. So it's a one-week lag that we are looking at, but that might actually work because then everybody gets to read the other comments also beforehand, instead of waiting for the next issue matrix to drop. So it's just sort of a workflow change. I don't know if it's possible, though.
Commissioner Panamin.
I would just say in terms of the laser-focused piece that, that it would be the chair's discretion, and I guess it depends on what staff is looking for from us, but, you know, to be honest with you, there are times we sit here and we wordsmith, and maybe that's not the best use of our time. So, you know, if, if the chair can move us along and if staff isn't really looking to us to completely wordsmith things, that would be, you know, we could, we could be more efficient if we don't get wrapped around the axle on finding the perfect word and is that a comma and, you know?
Commissioner Woodier.
I really, really love that comment because a lot of what I, what we see here is the laborious nitpicking on the words, which makes sense, it's all contextually important, but if we can do that directly to the staff, then it frees up time to have the conversation, have the discussion, provide the feedback in a highly efficient way so we, so that by being laser-focused, we get more done with the time that we're in this room.
I will second that. I've been trying to do that by sending out comments directly on the smaller items and focus on the more conceptually like important things that I want to call out, but it's, it's more work for us, I have to warn you, because you have to still write it out coherently and put it out there in time, like, I couldn't get it in time for this meeting.
There's, there's already a lot of reading, so I feel like adding seven commissioners' worth of emails on top of the existing reading. For me personally, that's not necessarily the fix that I'm looking for. I don't know, this is a hard thing, it's, there's just a balance here, there is a lot of work coming down the pike, so...
These are all good suggestions. You know, one mitigating kind of aspect of this is that you've seen the early drafts, you've provided input. In 2024, it's going to be final drafts. You know, the hope is that you see your input reflected and it's easy to kind of get from the beginning to the end of that process because there's not a lot of new concepts coming your way. But it will still be a lot of reading, for sure.
Yes. All right, so maybe we'll wrap that here in our three and a half minutes left. We'll do staff and commissioner updates.
I don't have everything, anything except to note that our next meeting is December 6th, and as you probably heard a couple times, there are also two public hearings on the 6th.
Great, and any commissioner updates? Congratulations, Angie. Thank you. All right, with that, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
No, no one motioned yet. Would you like to? So moved?
So moved, sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Then we adjourned.